Macro cell tower at the public works which was withdrawn after procedural concerns and residence resident opposition and recently again on August 1st the Borough issued bids for 180 foot temporary cell tower at the public works which was withdrawn only last week due to permit delays. The ordinance now seeks to open Borough lands to telecom leases. This reflects a troubling pattern step by step erosion of protections, repeated attempts to introduce a macro cell tower at block 25 and prioritization of industry interests over residents, including the ordinance conflicts with the master plan violates state law, falls short under Federal Communications Act and undermines our historic environmental resources and community character. I urge you as commissioners to reject it in its current form or at a minimum to revise it. Exclude Borough, borrowed of education, green acres, public trust and deed protected lands from macro cell tower sighting or leasing agreements. Require proof of both a service gap and least intrusive citing. Add categorical protection for the Cooper River, open spaces, parks and historic districts. Mandate review and mitigation of property value impact. Reliable cell service is important and can be achieved but not at the cost of Haddonfield identity laws and public trust. Commissioners, please uphold our master plan, protect our open spaces, historic character for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on agenda items not amendment of chapter 158? We'll move to Zoom? Well, yes, but we're not there yet. Moving to Zoom, any comments on agenda items not amendment amendments to ordinance 158? Please raise your hand and you'll be unmuted or asked to unmute. And I'm going to do a sound check again. So if you could, and I see, who do I see that could give me the thumbs up? Nadine, could you send me a thumb? Thank you. Oh, Shayna, go ahead. I think she was giving a thumbs. Oh, just giving a thumbs up. All right. Thank you. All right. So now we will move back in public into into the room. The lectern is yours on comments on anything else. And remember name and street if you're a Haddonfield resident, name and town if you are not.
I'm going to go now so I before I get any more nervous. Ah, you see, this is okay. My name's Anne McCracken and I live in the Muse in Haddonfield. And I just want to make a quick comment about the ordinance to chapter 158, peace and good order. Just from what I've read, it seems like it's a quick fix to a very complex problem that we haven't adequately studied. According to the Journal of American Medical Association in 2024, two thirds of people who are mentally ill, I mean, two people, thirds of people who are homeless are also mentally ill. So if you're going to jail people because they won't go to a shelter resulting from mental illness, you're essentially jailing people for being mentally ill. I think we need to really study this program problem. What is the true extent of it in Haddonfield? And then come up with compassionate solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne.
Hello. Okay. Uh, my name's Danielle Paterno. I live on Euclid Avenue.
Put to the mic.
My name's Danielle Paterno. I live on Euclid Avenue. My name is Danielle Paterno. I live on Euclid Avenue. I am here to oppose the amendments of 158 as well. As I share, a lot of people are here to oppose those amendments. Criminalizing homelessness in the United States was considered unconstitutional until one year ago when the Supreme Court passed its decision in Grants Pass v. Johnson. Now, cities across the country are starting to criminalize homelessness in response to a genuine problem. But that problem is that people cannot afford their homes and homelessness is on the rise. This is true. I met with Mary Sedell. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Pierre.
I met with Mary Sedell on Sunday to discuss this and I really appreciate him taking the time explaining the nuances of the amendments to me and the problems that are currently facing the town. You explained to me that there's about 11 individuals that we may be regularly dealing with that are homeless in this town and that we also have a police force that has very limited resources. We are a small town. And I think criminalizing sleeping overnight in Haddonfield is only adding more of a burden on our public safety officers and does not at all solve or address the problem. Criminalizing homeless is just forcing them to walk all night to go to other towns. And it's really just a waste of our police resources. We already have sections, subsections of ordinance 158 that address a lot of the problems that we all agree are we don't want happening in our town. Public urination, public defecation, trespassing. Subsection five addresses noise riots and disturbances. All of these are also punishable under the general provisions that include a fine up to $2,000 and imprisonment in the county jail, which if these amendments go forward, will also be the punishments for simply sleeping on a park bench overnight. Obviously homeless people cannot afford a $2,000 fine and imprisonment in the county jail does not help them at all. I understand that some people would want to frame the amendments to these ordinance as simply providing resources to the homeless population, offering them beds in shelters if they're available. And if those beds are not available, then they are not subject to the criminal fines. I understand that as well. But people do turn down these resources because shelters can be unsafe. They do have the right to turn that down and we should not criminalize them making that choice. One of the homeless people in the Grants Pass v. Johnson case that went before the Supreme Court, who unfortunately passed away, passed away with thousands of dollars in fines that she obviously could not pay to her name. This is just going to exacerbate the problems that homeless people face. And that's why I don't think we should criminalize them. Thank you.
Abers, could you pull the green thing down closer to like on the surface instead of at the top? And then if you want to take the gooseneck and put it, put your hand held into it, whichever one you want to do. But we just need the mic closer to you.
You need this mic closer.
It doesn't matter which one you want to use, but not everyone's going to want to hold it.
New mic and a here mic, right?
No, they're both. It's all the same.
I'll do my best. How's this?
Yeah, that's actually good, even with or without. Go ahead.
Great. Herb Hess 308, Red West Redmond Avenue. I know I'm supposed to address the commissioners, but I want.
No, you're supposed to address the commissioners.
Folks to see the shirt. Friend of mine gave it to me. Haddonfield changes everything. I'm an SOB. I'm a son of the borough. Jack Tardidi likes to say that. I grew up here. I was born and raised here. This is a photo of Harry McCabe. So I'm going to make this personal. Harry was a person who lived in Audubon for about 11 years. He was supported by Housing and Urban Development. And in the midst of COVID, the landlord sold the property and he was homeless. So I took him in. He was living in my office in the basement for about a year and a half during COVID and after the pandemic. And I got to admit, I'm not a social worker. I thought he had the capacity to figure out housing for himself. I mean, heck, HUD was giving him a voucher for housing. They were going to give him a voucher for utilities. But he had mental illness. He was sexually abused as a child by both the church and the Boy Scouts of America. He had hearing loss. And when I finally tried to turn my frustration into action, I would take him to the Camden County Housing Office. It's a brick building with a glass door with a QR code and the glass door is locked. So good luck if you have mental processing problems trying to figure out what the heck a QR code is. We banged on the door after somebody said, oh yeah, just bang on the door. Somebody will come in and answer. And they did. And he was able to get his voucher restored, which was of no use practically because any type of apartment or housing he applied for required a 650 credit score or better. His credit was in shambles. So he had to basically live in my office or live on the streets. And finally, we made it to the Camden County Board of Social Services in Cherry Hill, Woodcrest. And I dropped him off and he came back to the car and said, it's that guy, he doesn't speak English. I can't understand what he's saying. There's no hope. I said, let me go in with you. So we went in and he had trouble hearing, he had trouble focusing. But he wasn't a bad guy. He worked for me for years doing odd jobs. He was a Christian. He believed in the Bible. He had strong faith. He was generous. He'd help other people out who had no resources when he had nothing for himself. And we finally got him housing in Camden. It was kind of crappy where it was located, but it was at least three meals and a safe place to stay. And he was there for a few months, but he checked out. And then he moved on to another veterans housing facility, I think in Winslow. And then my friend Chip would keep me in contact with him. Sometimes he'd be at the Baptist church on Sundays, but more recently he had not been there. The last Sunday, when I opened up the retrospect, I read about a homeless man, 69 years old, who's found lifeless outside of Cafe Lift. And there was no next of kin, which I knew to be false. I had to call his daughter and break the news that her father had passed on, the father she'd tried to form a relationship with. So Harry was not a criminal in any sense of the word. He was tough to get along with sometimes. He had real needs. And he told me about people he knew who went to jail and came out dead or injured. Jail is not the place for somebody who has mental illness or other needs. So I tried to do my part. Haddonfield changes everything. Is it going to change it for the better or the worse? We have 11 churches in town. Some of them have full blown commercial kitchens. They have plenty of rooms. Can be set up a task force to find out another solution, whether it involves church charity or some type of housing that's available or some type of treatment. I haven't even read the ordinance, frankly. My daughter just told me about it a few minutes before we got here. Incarceration is not the solution. And I mourn my friend Harry and glad that he's not around to even face the prospect of being put in jail. It would kill him. Thank you.
Thanks, Herb. And Herb, sorry for your loss. You're welcome.
Hello, commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Eva Hess. I live on Redmond Avenue. I'm not super informed on this subject, but I know my fellow community here is. And I just found out about this meeting about an hour ago. So I just want to say, we are all so privileged to live in this town and to not share that with other people is just honestly inhumane. We need to be kind to others and set examples for other towns, South Jersey, to help people that are in need because you can only imagine if this was a situation you were in, you would want the same kind of help. Incarcerating homeless people or people experiencing homelessness doesn't help anyone, doesn't help people that are experiencing homelessness. And it just, it's heartbreaking. I can physically feel my heart beating in my chest because I can only hope that you want to help serve our community, no matter what, where they stand and what their privilege is. So I hope that you can look to find another solution, whether that be using open spaces, like how my dad offered his office to one of the homeless people in our community or church. We, there can be a different solution if we can put our minds together and work to be kind. And I feel that's very important. Thank you.
Thanks, Eva. And before the next person speaks, if I can just ask everyone to part, the people standing in front of the doorways, we want to keep these as a safe exit. We haven't started yet. All right.
Yeah, Andy, if you can move over and Andre, if you can move over just a little bit, make sure that both of those doorways are open.
Yeah.
All right, please.
My name is Kathy McGeehan and I reside at 265 Windsor Avenue. I've been a Haddonfield resident for about 14 years now. I feel like it's my town. I'm invested in it and I've had very good experiences with most people that I've met. I'm here just to say that I'm not really supporting the changes. In my mind, the peace and good order amendment, really the purpose is to ensure the enforcement of the project to have public places while being able to hold the constitutional and human rights of people that reside there or that happen to be within. So that's just my thought about what it's supposed to be about. Maybe we should think about purpose first. I have some questions. I wondered where you got statistics for your changes in the ordinance. I couldn't find too much specific, but I did find out that there's 681 unhoused persons in Camden County. So there's not really that much and we should be counting our blessings right now that we're not in a situation like some other cities and towns. And I'm afraid with some of the cuts that are being made, we're going to see more people that are homeless. So it would be best to really think this through. So I would like you to slow down a bit.
Hey, former, you can do it at the end. I'm just, I don't want her to lose time.
Did you have a citizens or an advisor group involved in this at all?
Well, we're, we'll address questions at the very end.
Okay. Well, the other thing, you know, I'm in science, so I believe in research. And I wondered if you did any research or contacted any experts to help you with it. I mean, we live in a wonderful area where we have experts in almost any field and you can tap them anytime that you want to. They're very helpful, very available. So I think that would be a good thing. And then I wondered if when you change ordinances, if it happens this rapidly, because I just read about people talking about homelessness at the last meeting. I didn't hear anything about it before. And I just wondered like if there's some reason that we're kind of being very quick with the way it is. I would really like to see us slow down, think about the people. They could be a vet. They could be a vet with post traumatic stress disorder. They could be a teenage child that's really needing some support. They could be somebody that honestly lost their home. Like the pastor was saying, it happens. I've seen mothers and children living in cars because they lost their home. It's difficult. Let's try to put ourselves in their situations before you make any rash judgments. And above all, we can't criminalize this because they're not totally responsible for it. So we can't hold them totally responsible. Now, it's an expedient way to handle it, but it's probably the wrong way to handle it. So please slow down the process, have an advisory committee, get experts involved, and please make Haddonfield proud.
Good evening. I'm Karen McGrath Dunn. I live on Linden Avenue. I'm the owner of an affordable housing management company. We serve low income elderly and families in towns adjacent to this, as well as New Jersey, all of the state of New Jersey and Pennsylvania. I'm here to voice my concerns with the amendment language. I'm going to keep it brief and focus on three problems. First, unclear language. This ordinance fails to define what's actually illegal. What does protractedly lounge mean? Is that 10 minutes or two hours? What time is dusk and what time is dawn? We might define it differently. The personal property obstruction language is also very vague. It invites selective enforcement. A businessman with a briefcase might be overlooked, as somebody with a backpack or luggage might be cited based on appearance alone. This language criminalizes loud, boisterous behavior and conduct tending to breach public peace. I have a teenager. These are terms that could easily apply to my teenager after a movie or with friends lounging on a bench. Who's to decide? This overly vague language forces our police officers to guess what's allowed guaranteeing inconsistent application. I think police, taxpayers and visitors to our community deserve better. Second problem creates problems instead of solving them. As others have mentioned, I have an issue with the shelter exception. I think it's meaningless. It requires police to advise about shelters, not ensure they're safe or secure, available or appropriate. It fails to account for safety concerns or health concerns like bedbugs, huge issue in shelters, violence, pet separation, big reason people don't want to go to shelters, or illness. Do people deserve jail time because they won't go somewhere unsafe? Under this ordinance, someone could face 90 days in jail and 2,000 in fines. I don't know if I read that right. That is for having nowhere safe to sleep. As someone who manages affordable housing with years long wait lists, I see every day how low income people struggle to avoid homelessness in this state and others. This ordinance essentially criminalizes poverty. It adds criminal records and fines for simply existing in our public spaces. I do not know why we would want to add more hardship to those who cannot afford housing. My last point is that it creates legal and financial risks. This enables selective and subjective enforcement. A college student on a bench is hanging out, but someone who looks poor is loitering. A person's right to exist in public should not depend on having the right look or proof of housing. The subjectivity also exposes us as taxpayers to costly lawsuits. It's something I believe we should all avoid. In summary, I urge you to reject this ordinance amendment language and create a working group to develop practical solutions that protect individual liberties. I would be happy to help. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Courtney Warner. I live on Princeton Road in Haddonfield. I'm here with the South Jersey DSA and also alongside Cooper River Indivisible and South Jersey Progressive Democrats. And we are all urging you to please reject ordinance 202511, which is the one we are talking about. Everyone before me said it perfectly. This is not going to help these people. It's literally just going to punish people who have nothing with debt and arrest records, which will just make it harder for them to get housing or jobs later. And this ordinance is especially disturbing in Haddonfield, which is one of the wealthiest towns, not just in the state, but in the whole country. We have multimillion dollar mansions everywhere around us and a place with so much privilege and abundance. Our response to homelessness should not be punishment. It won't make this town safer and it won't make our kids safer. We need to set an example for our kids and future generations by treating people with compassion, not cruelty. If this town truly wants peace and good order, the answer should be a thorough study, research based, housing first approach. We should be using this town's enormous wealth and privileges to help these people get permanent housing and supportive services. Housing is the foundation of stability, dignity and safety for everyone. And I urge the commissioners to reject this ordinance and pursue a real solutions based model rooted in compassion and housing first. And I also want to thank Commissioner Cole for bringing this to our attention. And I would also like to know who was the one that brought this forward to begin with. Also, just want to say if your biggest problem is litter, then we should be focusing on bigger problems.
Hi, my name is Lisa. I'm actually here from Mount Laurel, New Jersey. I am actually here on behalf of the Green Party of New Jersey as their candidate for Lieutenant Governor. Our governor candidate is Lily Benavides. I am here to discuss, obviously, the homelessness issue. And I wanted to, others have stated very well, so I'm not going to add on to those. I will add on to the fact that this will also cause another problem, which we've already had to try to address, which is our overpopulations in prisons and in jails, which we have yet to come up with a solution, especially since a lot of our jails and prisons are privatized in the state, in the United States, as well as in New Jersey themselves. I also want to state that you guys are public servants that are here to serve us. So this is an egregious overstep of your power and is very corrupted in its ways. I also want to state, I know you guys are going to address questions at the end, but what are you going to do about it? Are you going to stop corporations such as black, such as Vanguard or Blackrock buying up housing and causing housing prices to skyrocket? Are you going to allow people to continue to buy houses to create the next Airbnb or Verbo and rent them out as summer homes and vacation homes and not actually live there, but use it as a way to drive income? Or are you going to allow people to raise the minimum wage in this township to be able to allow cost of living? Anybody in this room, including you guys, I'm sure know somebody who is on the verge or could be on the verge of becoming homeless. Would you want any of your friends' families, including sons, daughters, nieces, nephews, grandchildren, to be in jail or prison just because they couldn't afford to survive?
Hi, my name is Karen Tanyer and I'm from Mount Ephrim, but I was married to the Catholic Church down the street. And the people who came before me have spoke eloquently about the demands of mercy and compassion and humanity. And there's nothing I can add to that to make it better. So I'm going to call on your self-interest. The line of this ordinance that really concerns me is engage in any disorderly conduct or behavior tending to breach the public peace. Every summer, you reenact a breaching of the public peace. America was founded on the right for us to breach the public preach. And this is a very dangerous ordinance because you might be trying to make your beautiful downtown, which is beautiful. We're here all the time, a little nicer. But there are people in the federal government that are pushing these policies so that they can use them as reasons to send the National Guard into DC, into Chicago, into Baltimore, into Philadelphia. This is a gateway ordinance that is allowing federal overreach disguised as a public service. And we need to call it out. Thank you very much. and we need to call it out. Thank you very much.
I can't believe I have to follow.
No, I love it. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Carrie Allen. I live on King's Highway East. I'm your borough neighbor. I've lived in Haddonfield for a very long time, raised my children here. I'm a psychologist. I work with children. I work with families. I work with public policy. And we were founded on Quaker principles, Haddonfield. And these principles emphasize compassion, equality, and care for the vulnerable. Some folks, you came out, I'm bringing out Elizabeth Hadden now because... Okay, better?
A little louder, yeah.
Okay. So I'm going to bring up Elizabeth Hadden because that's who we were founded on. When we have an ordinance that's fundamentally flawed for many, many reasons, when it criminalizes poverty rather than addressing the root causes, when we make it illegal to sleep in public spaces or engage in any activities that are just for survival, okay? This is not fun. This is not, you know, the teenagers riding their bikes up and down, you know, King's Highway making a fuss. This is for survival. When we make this illegal, we're not reducing homelessness. We're not addressing the root cause. We're moving it out of sight while making it even more difficult for people to get the services to achieve some stability. Other folks have talked about the financial costs, okay? Haddonfield's all about financial costs, right? I mean, we're all about saving money. We're about spending money. We're about saving money, too. So the financial costs here are substantial. So for each arrest for a homelessness-related offenses, it requires police resources, court time, potential jail stays. Do you think they're going to be able to get out on bail, right? Where are we going to put these folks, okay? And that far exceeds the cost of what effective evidence-based interventions could do to address this problem. We're talking about mental health issues. We're talking about people just down on their luck for whatever reason. We're talking about vets. We're talking about families. We're talking about people. Is this how we want to use our resources? We already have a very strapped police force. Is this what we want to have them doing, deciding who to arrest on King's Highway? So it also undermines safety, right? So when people who are arrested for homelessness, what happens? You get a criminal record. When you get a criminal record, what does it make it harder to do? It makes it harder to get a job so you can have the money and you can have a home and you can have services. You have a criminal record. It's going to be harder to access the services you need. It's going to be harder to find a good place to be. It just, it is complete opposite of what we're trying to do. So we can figure this out, right? We're smart people, right? I mean, other people have done it. It's not rocket scientists. I mean, there's communities that find a way to connect people with the services. They address the real cause of homelessness, the addiction, the mental illness, the job loss. They do see actual results. We can keep our public spaces safe and clean without making poverty a crime. Oh, but for the grace of God, go I. My mother was fortunate enough to be one of the earliest folks that got to take advantage of low-income housing in Haddonfield. Now granted, luckily she had me if it all fell apart. But what if she didn't? My mom would have been on the streets. But she was able to access services because I was able to get her there. She didn't know what she was doing, right? She wanted to be able to access that. So as our founder, Elizabeth Hadden, the Quaker principle is there is that God in everyone. So we must ask ourselves, oh, now it's coming out big, right? So we must ask ourselves, as Elizabeth Hadden, does criminalizing our neighbors reflect that foundation of belief? So let's direct our resources towards evidence-based solutions that reflect both fiscal responsibility and community values. We're better than this, and we can do better than this. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Nate Robertson. I'm a resident of Barrington. Nate, yes. I'm a resident of Barrington. I grew up there and I reside there currently, but I have been going to the Haddonfield United Methodist Church my entire life. I grew up in poverty because my dad's business went under when I was a little kid. And a little over 10 years ago, my parents, after years of fighting it, finally lost their house. And I suddenly found myself living in a pickup truck. Luckily, I had my church to support me, and I had just started working somewhere. I'm not going to dox myself with that, but they rallied around me, too. But it was still an extremely depressing and dark time in my life, even with that support. And I know that without that support, I wouldn't have survived it. I would get harassed by the police just for sleeping in my vehicle. I would get followed from work to my church, where I used to go to the Current, which was our Sunday night service every week, even though this particular officer wasn't a officer for any of the towns from my work to my church and in between. I wouldn't be here today if the people around me didn't treat me like a person at a time where I no longer felt like a person. I've, thanks to them, I've been able to build a career for myself. I'm currently at a management-level position. I've built a life for myself. And in my experience, regardless of why someone is in the situation of being homeless, because there's still people at the end of the day, my experience was a lot of it were people that lost their homes due to the Great Recession or losing their job or their business going under, teens that were kicked out of their homes by their parents or guardians for being LGBTQ. Most of these people were working. And once I ended up on the police's radar, sleep was an issue, to the point where I was falling asleep standing at work, learned that you can keep falling asleep because your knees buckle and then you wake back up again. And my store director and the department heads ended up putting me in a hotel for a couple weeks to recharge my batteries. These people are already living a nightmare every day. They don't want to be living on your streets. They don't want to be living on these park benches. Every day is a nightmare that they can't wake up from whether they're getting sleep or not. Please don't criminalize these people. Please don't kick them while they're already down because it really is a matter of life and death. For every person out there that was homeless like me that managed to survive, there's dozens more that didn't, whether due to inaction or due to arguably evil action that makes their lives even more hellish and dangerous than they already are. So I beg of you, please, please don't do this. Thank you.
Neil, before you go, I just have a question from South. So after Nate, we actually are going to go online because there's a professional that was asked to address the audience. And we'll give him the floor of just, no, 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 after you, after you, Nate. I mean, after you, Neil.
Father Neil Rahman, I live on King's Highway. I have a question that was passed to me by another pastor in town, which I'm going to read, and then I've got my statement. The question is, given the number of-
I won't start your clock until you finish reading that, okay?
Given the number of people planning to speak, I've been asked to ask this. Since there's a new 60-unit shelter that's in the process of being built in Blackwood, as well as a new multiple-agency center being built in Camden, would it be unreasonable to postpone, considering the severity of Haddonfield's response, until greater, until greater research and more humanitarian response can be created with new resources? That's the question, and then I've got my statement as well.
All right, thanks. Okay, go ahead. You have your phone.
So I'm the priest at Grace Church, and I reside in the business district with my wife and toddler. Given our location between King's Highway and the Patco Station, I've gotten to know quite a number of the folks who are experiencing homelessness in and around Haddonfield and that come through quite often. There are people like you and me who have found themselves in incredibly difficult circumstances, as the prior speaker just illustrated. As both a citizen of this community and a priest of the church, I'm really concerned and distressed by this legislation. I'll just say that though we don't all share the same religious convictions, my opinions about this course of action are rooted firmly in my faith. Holy Scripture is clear about our responsibility to those members of our community who are struggling and suffering. We are to help them. Full stop. It allows for differing opinions on how we help them, but we are to help them. The moral teaching of the church over 2,000 years points to that same responsibility. That moral teaching is rooted in that scripture and the understanding that each of us bears the image and likeness of God. One of the ways that my own Episcopal church articulates that moral teaching is a commitment and responsibility to respect the dignity of every human being. The ordinance as presented does not measure up either to the test of scripture or the consistent moral teaching of the church, nor does it represent the best practices according to the agencies that advocate for ending homelessness. We have data that show that this sort of legislation does not actually help those who are experiencing homelessness. What it really does is just make it so that we don't see them. I ask that the Commissioners consider tabling this legislation so that we can work together, so that the Commissioners, the borough, can work with the churches and religious organizations, social service agencies, and the county, which has a number of initiatives already in the works around ending homelessness, and the whole community in addition to those groups, to find a path forward that addresses the concerns that led to the introduction of this piece of legislation. And there are real concerns that should be addressed. But we need to address them in a way, and I think by working together we can, that does so in a way that helps lift these neighbors of ours who are in a hard way up and lift them out of poverty and into stability rather than hiding the problem or just passing it off to another borough. I had a really great conversation with Mayor Seidel earlier today. And we talked about exactly these sorts of partnerships. I think there is an appetite for them. I think there is room for them. But time is going to be required to discuss, to study, and then to act. This legislation gives us one tool in our toolbox. And if you only have one tool in your toolbox, that's what you're going to use over and over and over again. And one of my worries is that we do, if we do this, we won't have the opportunity to even consider going to a hardware store and getting more tools because we've got the one tool and it seems to be working, we might say. I stand ready this evening to partner with the borough government in this work. I am certain that I am not alone in that. Today, we have the opportunity to step out. We have the opportunity to lead, to set an example for other municipalities. I've been in Haddonfield about a year and a half. I know for certain that we have the capacity to do this work. My question tonight is, do we have the will?
I'm going online first. I know, but I, no time. This is, this is the next person, and I've already afforded the time to speak. So, no, no, we're going, and then we'll come back to you.
Why did this come up? Isn't there enough-
I am sorry. We're going that way first. Thank you, Father Neil. Next, I'm inviting Jeff Wild to speak, so you can unmute him. He's a professional at the state with-
Legal attorney and private practice. Okay, he represents a nonprofit entity.
Yeah, he represents a nonprofit entity for homeless services. And I've asked him to be next. So Jeff?
Yes, this is Jeff Wild. I am not at all sure I should have any right to go next, but since you invited me, I will speak quickly and let others, other advocates join in. I'm a litigation partner at New Jersey's largest law firm, Lowenstein Sandler. I'm also a trustee of the New Jersey Coalition to End Homelessness, which advocates for the rights of unhoused men and women of New Jersey. My dad was also homeless during the Great Depression. He ended up successful and put me through law school. That's part of the reason why, why I do this at least. And I can tell you, I have absolutely nothing useful to add to what other advocates are already saying very correctly, that the right answer to ending homelessness is to help people find housing. And there's absolutely no need for Haddonfield to enact an ordinance that could be used to fine or put unhoused people in jail. And so the board should table this proposed ordinance, which I submit is illegal under New Jersey law, which is different from the US Supreme Court decision that was discussed previously, and instead work with the nonprofits to solve what is absolutely a huge problem, the tragedy of any unhoused men and women sleeping outdoors in public parks or streets. It's an abomination, and we should all agree that that's outrageous and we need to stop it. The only thing that I can maybe add to this discussion is a legal perspective. And it's one I can share because I have decades of experience working with municipalities throughout the state, Lakewood, Patterson, Tom's River, Clifton, many others, to solve the problem. And I've been at other first meetings like this. And you're sort of at a fork in the road, Commissioners. You can solve the problem either the hard, illegal way or the legal, easy way. My experience with the hard way is in part from the town of Lakewood, Notion County. And they tried to force people out of town through legal means. There were 120 men and women living in a community. Lakewood litigated for many, many years with pro bono attorneys like me. And all that municipality ended up with were court losses, huge legal bills, ultimately paying for housing and causing irreparable harm to the town's reputation. The easy legal way is what everyone here is saying. For example, in Patterson, after the first meeting, it withdrew its ordinance, never got beyond the first reading. And we work with that municipality to solve the problem the right way. In virtually every situation I've been involved in over the decades statewide, my clients, unhoused senior citizens, vets, disabled people, people who just can't make enough to make rent on minimum wage, they're not outside because they want to. It's because they can't make rent. They can't get into a decent shelter. I hope that the board will decide to join the vast majority of municipalities, not to take on legal battles, but to abandon efforts to punish unhoused people and get them a place to sleep indoors. Instead, I'm very optimistic that this board of Commissioners will. I just had a very good first call today with Haddonfield Solicitor, Mr. Ceciliaano. I commend him for saying that the board is willing to talk to the experts, is willing to try to cooperate and solve the problem legally, and not as a legal matter, but through compassion, common sense, problem solving. And we've done it over and over again. We can do it. And it will work in Haddonfield if you'll just work with the New Jersey Coalition to end homelessness, the other experts, through a government-private task force and actually doing a little homework before any rush to pass a new law, which will not help anything. I'm going to stop there because there's so many other people. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Jeff. Now we're going to come back into the room for comment period. Julie, are you still here? Excuse me. We are trying to understand your opinions. That's why we're going around here. It's very difficult when there are outbursts during someone else's comments. It's almost kind of like when you're at the movie and there's someone talking. When you're really trying to pay attention, we're really trying to pay attention, and it doesn't help.
I'm Julie Vick. I live on Center Street and have lived there for 40 years. I live on Center Street and have lived there for 40 years. I have a comment and a question. When I first heard about this ordinance, the first thing I thought was, there's so much cruelty in our country right now, does our little town have to add to it? And then my next thought was a question. Why now? Why are you writing this? Who wrote it? Did someone tell you to? Is there somebody in the presidential administration who's sitting on small towns and saying, so why did you write this now? There seem to be enough of other things going on in Haddonfield to deal with, so I am curious as to why, why you wrote this and why you wrote it now.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, you'll answer it later?
We'll answer it, sure, just, it would take forever.
Right.
We'll answer it at the end.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to voice our opinions. My name is Sam, and I live on Upland Way. This is my third draft. My dad thought my first two were a little too excoriating. jails are filled with the accused, not the guilty. I refuse to let you criminalize someone's state of being when we all could be in that position too. Do you think you're closer to a house on Lane of Acres than you are to the streets? Imagine you get in a car accident, it's really bad, you get hooked on pills. What happens when the meds get taken away? You go to the streets, where's your money go? Maybe you make a bad investment, you lose everything. It doesn't take much more than a bad day. We should be uplifting our community. That includes the brave people who find ways to survive in sweltering heat when we're comfortable with roofs over our heads and A.C. This ordinance is evil, and if it passes, it would be a slap in the face, a kick to the nuts, a beating of a dead horse. You want to legalize the cops scaring off unhoused people? People who have already lost so much or had enough taken from them. And we can spend our money on new turf fields, which aren't really that great for the environment, but maybe it's better than the landfill we used to play soccer on. We can spend our money to send two cops to give one person a ticket. Why do we not help our fellow humans? Where is the humanity? Where is the heart? And when are we going to stop putting Band-Aids on issues that we're all complicit in? Thank you.
Susan Hope. I've lived in Haddonfield for 31 years. I'm here in a couple capacities. One is, I'd like to talk about this from a medical person, point of view. In 1970, when I was a medical student, I spent a rotation at Chicago State Mental Institution on a ward. Anyone else in the room spent a month on a medical, on a mental institution ward? There were people like this then. We didn't have too much PTSD from Vietnam yet in 1970, but we had people on drugs, we had alcoholics, whatever. They got deinstitutionalized. Remember Reagan started that in California, it came east. We have, these are people who have medical needs. We have people with PTSD, we have LGBTQ kids who've been thrown out of their house, who've been raped, maybe raped in shelters. We have people with alcohol and various drug addictions, and we're imprisoning people with illness. That's like going into the Acby and rounding up every diabetic who buys tasty cakes. I mean, it makes no sense. Now, I had heard that Collingswood is now arresting people. Is that true? That's my question for you. Are they arresting the homeless? Because if other towns start doing this, we're just, it's like, you know, if I put my trash in my neighbor's trash can, and he puts it in the trash can next to them, and he puts it in the trash can, the trash is still there. Okay? We can't solve this problem by putting people in jail or moving it elsewhere. Now, I do have a suggestion for you, two other things. One is, we tend to other these people, and I would like to remind everyone here that in the last 15 years, at least 10 of our high school graduates have gotten involved with drugs and killed themselves. So this is not an other problem, the mentally ill. It is not an alcohol problem, that is not our problem. It is our problem as much as people in Camden's problems or people in Blackwood's problems or anywhere else. And I know we're hidey-tidy, haughty-toy, but we're all in this together. Finally, I do have a suggestion for the name of this resolution. I would like you to call it a sundown resolution because you're doing this from dusk to dawn. Y'all know what sundown towns were? Sundown towns, where black people couldn't be there between dusk and dawn. So if you pass this, I want it to be named the Sundown Resolution. No mentally ill people, no PTSD, no alcoholics, no drug addicts in Haddonfield after dusk. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan.
About my reading glasses, I'm going to blow this up. Hold on.
Need a pair?
Good.
There you go.
Oh, I think I'm good, though. No, I'm good.
All right.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Liz Rocco. I live on Oakridge Drive here in Haddonfield. I own a business at Six Kings Highway East. I'm deeply involved in the community through my volunteer work, my real estate business, and simply as a parent, raising children here. My office sits just steps from the Paco Station, so every day I have a front row seat to who is coming in and out of the town. I want to start by saying this, I believe we should be helping people who are homeless. Many are vulnerable, struggling with addiction or mental illness, and they deserve real care. But the reality is, they should not be living on the streets. What's happening now in Haddonfield goes far beyond someone quietly sitting on a bench. Often homeless people come off the Paco with their belongings because they know they can stay here. Some people are harmless, but others are not. We've seen homeless people openly using drugs, sitting upright, passed out, using alleys and parking lots as bathrooms, panhandling customers and businesses, checking cars for unlocked doors, and having mental outbursts in front of the storefronts. Just recently, a homeless man was found deceased on Kings Highway in front of a business. These are real incidents. I, along with other business owners, have photos, videos, and police reports to prove it. I'll share with you some few examples I had personally. My business was broken into overnight by a homeless man who smashed our front door looking for money. Ironically, we're a real estate office, so we don't carry money, but he was able to find some cash in a drawer and took off. Another day, a man was, I'm sorry, another day, my car was broken into in broad daylight while I was walking around the corner to pick up my children at Central Elementary School. Thank God, we went back into the office first before, before I went back to my car, otherwise we would have been face to face with the man. A violent domestic fight between a homeless couple broke out in front of my office with a man threatening to kill the woman. Another man defecated in my parking lot and then proceeded to jump the fence that leads directly to the middle school during school hours. This is not exaggerated. It's daily reality for businesses and residents around Kings Highway. Some business owners now keep their doors locked all day. Residents who live above the shops don't feel safe walking their dogs at night. This is not how Haddonfield should be. We should not be left alone either to deal with this by ourselves. Haddonfield is a walkable town. Our children walk these streets every day. Their safety and ours needs to come first. And that's why this ordinance matters. It doesn't criminalize homeless people. It requires the police to first advise individuals about emergency shelters and even offer transportation. That's compassion, but it also gives officers the authority to say, when necessary, you cannot sleep here, move along. That's accountability. To those who may not support this ordinance, I ask you to consider the lived reality of those of us downtown. We are not asking for cruelty, we're asking for balance, compassion for homeless people in need, and safety for our families, our children, and businesses. We all want long-term solutions, housing treatment, mental health services, but until those exist, this ordinance is a necessary step to protect our town, our families, and the community we've worked so hard to build. I urge you to pass this. Thank you.
Hey there. My name is Alex Byer. I'm from Barrington.
Alex?
Yeah. I do serve on council there, but for this evening, I'm here as a member of the communities at large in the surrounding towns, just as a member of the community like everyone else here in opposition of the amendment changes to Chapter 158. Just I, like many people, you know, in my extended family have dealt with, you know, and experienced homelessness, you know, with members of our own family. And I think this should serve as sort of a warning bell, as a municipal precedent that could happen to other surrounding towns. We don't have this language. I know that in our ordinances in Barrington at this time, I personally do not want to see them there. Some housing advocates in New Jersey have consistently opposed similar ordinances. I know that, like Jeff said, and I can talk a little bit about Patterson, but not much, but things like this criminalize a condition, not a crime generally, creating barriers to housing and employment, as was, as been mentioned by other speakers tonight, undermining those outreach efforts. We talk about, you know, police can be involved, but a lot of times it undermines by creating fear of law enforcement. These measures create trust for homeless, homeless people and unhoused individuals to interact with shelters and other professionals that can actually support and help and help set them on a more help and a path for their life. It is often not saving money to the taxpayers, and while that is not the most important thing here, it is often very costly and inefficient to go through all this, and often just moves to simply displace the problem while ignoring all those root causes. Very quickly, it's crucial that, and this is quoting from the ACL of New Jersey, after Patterson did rescind their amendments, it's crucial that New Jersey towns support unhoused communities by prioritizing care and rehabilitation, not criminalization. Ordnance fails, they often provide tangible solutions or support that would instead cause damage to these people's lives. Imposing criminal penalties on unhoused people sleeping in public spaces is inhumane, ineffective, and immoral. Vulnerable people in need should be met with stable and safe housing and shelter options, not with jail cell time. You worry about the cycle of when someone who can't afford to pay fines gets stuck in a negative feedback loop of jail time, fees, and bail that they can't meet, and that's not something we need to further along as a great problem in this country. So we just hope that people who are unhoused deserve respect and not punishment. Thank you.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Jenna Colajakami. Jenna?
Okay.
I live in Somerville, that's in Somerset County. I work in Middlesex County. Part of me, I didn't have a lot of time to prepare for today. I drove an hour and a half from North Jersey after work today. And where do I work? I'm a director at a nonprofit that helps homeless people. I started a year ago, and I was very grateful to my boss. I've spent on and off the majority of my life caring about homeless people. When I was a kid, I was a Girl Scout. We did a lot for the homeless. We made them hygiene kits. When I went to college, Johns Hopkins University, I studied different classes about how homelessness comes about. I did a practicum. I worked at different homeless shelters. I instituted an entire computer literacy program so that we could actually educate the homeless and help them build new skills so they could get a better job. In Middlesex County, we're doing everything we possibly can to not only get people off the streets, get them into our coordinated entry and assessment program, we're trying to refer them to the right services. So we're referring them to mental health, substance abuse. If they don't have any income at all, we refer them to the Board of Social Services, and we also have different types of case management in-house. So I am part of a committee, part of an initiative right now. We're trying to prevent homelessness. So we're developing different ways that we can actually work with the community to try and address the structural and economic issues going on in our community. And so, as you can see, if I drove all the way down here to address you today, it's because I'm trying to get you to understand that criminalizing people for basically suffering through something that may or may not be their own fault, it's just not fair. And as someone actually pointed out earlier, we're starting to wonder, is this part of the fascist agenda? Did someone tell you to do this? We should be caring about our neighbors, and that's what they are. It doesn't matter if they don't have a home. It doesn't matter if they urinated on your begonias, okay? It doesn't matter, they are your neighbors. This is a community, and we should be doing everything we possibly can to direct people to resources. And if those resources don't exist, well, don't you think you should create them? Don't you think you should go on Google, try and figure out, where's the local homeless agency? Who can I ask for guidance? Right? So, like I said, I didn't come here extremely prepared, but I did want to point out that I do agree that I don't believe that this is actually legally sound. I highlighted quite a few things in here that seem to be a violation of just the First Amendment alone. The freedom of speech. I curse like a sailor sometimes, maybe I shouldn't admit that in public. So if you hear me cursing, does that mean I'm using indecent language? Should I be locked up? Like someone else said, if I'm sitting on a park bench too long, if I have a headache and I take a nap in the park. I mean, where does the line end? Where does it begin? At what point is someone who's in this audience now being subject to this, this ordinance? So, no, I don't agree with it. I oppose it, even though I don't live here. And I have to ask you, will you be building affordable housing? Because it's my understanding you don't have a lot of affordable housing here. Are you going to be building emergency shelters? Where we are, we have access sites, and we actually have other townships dropping off people at our access sites, okay? We help everyone. We help everyone. It doesn't matter where you came from, we're going to help you.
Anthony, I'm just going to say it's nine o'clock, just saying the time.
Understood. Anthony Hollingworth. I'm Roberts Avenue. Regarding the proposed amendments to the borough ordinances, I have a simple message. Criminalization of homelessness does not work. It does nothing to address the root causes of the problem. It exacerbates the problem in every possible way for those who already are in distress, and it involves them in the criminal justice system, making it even harder for them to escape their circumstances. This is opposed by hundreds of homelessness policy and advocacy groups, including veterans' homelessness organizations. It's coercive and cruel, where compassion and kindness are required. It diverts our police's attention from time and resources from a tackling real criminality like drug-taking and violence, which we, I believe, we already have laws against. It is at best a flawed and simplistic response to a complex problem. At worst, it's a callous overreaction wrapped in the language of caring and support. The exception that's included is more of a procedural step before criminal action than a meaningful intervention. I suspect that also it's designed to appear tough, that this is the toughness of a bully who knows nothing about compassion, much like the most prominent supporters of this kind of policy on the national stage. It will be an embarrassment for it to be seen for affluent town like ours to pull up the drawbridge to neighbors and fellow citizens and unnecessarily bring us negative publicity. and unnecessarily bring us negative publicity. We, as a town, should do better. We should be more innovative in addressing the problems by working in partnership with the county, neighboring towns, businesses, community groups, churches, and others to provide support services for people in our town who need help. Tickets, cuffs, and cruelty won't change anything, but will certainly make us look like cruel, uncaring bullies who've got no real idea how to solve problems. I can't object strongly enough to these amendments.
Thank you, Anthony.
One minute. One moment, please. We have to keep the door clear. And people had to open the other side of the door just to be able to get out. So, no, that's not enough. If you could kind of swing around. There are some seats open now. People have been leaving. So I'm inviting you to, yeah, thank you. Okay. Please.
Hi, my name is Matthew. I live in Audubon, pretty close to here to Haddonfield.
All right, Matthew.
All right. Thank you very much. I wanted to lead with some, some points about the amendment. We, we, you have in there a stature, I guess, excuse me for not knowing the correct terminology, about defecation and urination. On a, on a quick search on Google Maps, if I look up public restrooms, the closest public restroom is not here in Haddonfield, but is two miles away in Cherry Hill, New Jersey. That is a 50-minute walk from here. As someone who does not drive, someone who frequently walks, I walk three and a half hours to church. Public restrooms are very difficult to find. There have been several times I have walked and almost had to urinate myself because leaving I went and going somewhere, there's been nowhere to go. I know Cherry Hill well enough that I know there's a few places with porta-potties that are nasty and uncleaned. On top of that, you have an up to $2,000 fine for people who are going to be, who are going to be protractively sitting. What does that mean? Is that a little bit over a 90-degree angle? Are we gonna have cops walking around with protractors? Is that what we're doing here? If, if a, if a fine is the penalty for a crime, the crime is being poor. The crime is being poor. I want you to understand that. Now, I myself do not subscribe to the idea of divinity, but I do agree with the teach, many of the teachings of Jesus of Nazareth. So I would like to read a quick passage here from the Bible as spoken by Jesus of Nazareth. "There was a certain rich," apologies. "There was a certain rich man who clothed himself in purple and fine linen and who feasted luxuriously every day. At his gate lay a certain poor man named Lazarus who was covered in sores. Lazarus longed to eat the crumbs that fell from the rich man's table. Instead, dogs would come and lick his sores. The poor man died and was carried by angels to Abraham's side. The rich man also died and was buried. While being tormented in the place of the dead, he looked up and saw Abraham at a distance with Lazarus at his side. He shouted, 'Father Abraham, have mercy on me. Send Lazarus to dip the, dip, dip the tip of his finger in the water and cool my tongue, because I'm suffering in this flame.' But Abraham said, 'Child, remember that during your lifetime, you received good things, whereas Lazarus received terrible things. Now Lazarus is being confronted, and you are in great pain.'" My hope in reading that passage, that is, that is, if the messages of compassion do not reach you, that the message of eternal damnation might. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew.
This next person who's about to speak is Richard Unacki. And he's, he's here for, as a personal request from me and personal invitation. He's the president of Bridges Outreach and worked closely with Summit New Jersey that inspired this ordinance that we have here today. So I want you to hear from him directly what that experience was like for Summit New Jersey and what they're working through now. So, please.
I'm sorry, what was his name?
Thank you. It's Richard Unniak.
Yes, Richard Unacki.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Cole. And thank you, commissioners, for letting me speak this evening. We serve predominantly Essex and Union Counties. We are 24/7 on the ground in Newark. We also work very closely with the city of Summit, which is, was a pretty similar situation. We helped create and participate actively in a mayor's task force to solve homelessness. That includes the prevention of imminent homelessness. We started using data, developing a by-name list. We had as many as 35 people who were experiencing chronic unsheltered homelessness in the city. We're down to about one. And that work is very hard. And it takes a lot of courage, especially political courage, to decide that you're gonna come together as a community and solve homelessness. I noticed that there were, in the 23-24 school year, there were 31 students who qualified for free and reduced-priced lunch in Haddonfield, right? These are families, you've heard a lot of important things tonight. These are families living on the edge. What would you have them do if someone should face housing insecurity or homelessness? I think it's important to, to highlight the illegality that you're likely facing, which has been indicated by Jeff Wild. I think it's also important to talk about the costs, right? And this is an important conversation that we had with Summit. In New Jersey, it costs approximately $75,000 a year to incarcerate a human, whereas it costs, on average, $12,050 in order to rapidly house a two-person household for a year. If you talk about institutionalization, the cost to operate Greystone was in excess of $100, $800 a day, right? Heading down the path of institutionalization and incarceration is not just wrong. It's not just a really bad look. I mean, ask the folks in Summit. The commissioners had to walk through, they're their council people, they had to walk through a gauntlet of media because there was a press conference protesting the activity leading into a council meeting, right? It's not just all of those things. It's also not cost-effective, right? Out the other end of an incarceration period or a stint in a psychological institution, you're still homeless. You haven't solved anything. You've just kicked the can down the road. So I'd be happy to talk further about the strategies that involve bringing all stakeholders together to determine who's out there, what they're facing, really meeting people where they are, and figuring out how to create systems so that experiences of homelessness can be rare, brief, and non-recurring. That's what we owe to our neighbors, because homelessness is a failure of society. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Richard. And Richard?
All right, Julie.
Yeah, Richard drove a long way to come here after a long day of work. So I deeply appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Julie Beddingfield. I live at 101 Avondale Avenue in Haddonfield. I also own Inkwood Books, which is at 106 Kings Highway East in Haddonfield. I sent you, thank you. I sent you guys an email earlier today, and I didn't know if I could make it, but I feel compelled to speak publicly.
Thank you. We received it.
Thank you. I've owned Inkwood for 10 years. I'm downtown all day, every day, seven days a week. We're open late at night. We have lots of events that go well past dusk into the evening. I have never, in the 10 years I've been there, had any issues with any homeless people in town. I have, I counted up today over 103 people in our store every single day. I've never heard from any of those 103 people in our store every single day have never had a comment or concern about homeless people in our store or homeless people in our town, ever. That's a lot of people. It just baffles me that I've never heard of an issue. If there's a perceived issue, I feel like I'd heard about it by now. The only time I've had any incidents with anyone in town are with the kids in town. The kids who harass an adult with disability so much that he comes in our store every day because we're his safe space. We shouldn't have to have a safe space for this guy who's being harassed by the kids in town. That's what we do for this guy. We need to show them compassion. We had kids in June who opened our door at nine o'clock at night and yelled, 'I hate gay people,' while we were having an open-mic pride event in June. These are the kids in our town. These are the kids who are learning how to treat people from us. This is our opportunity to show them how we're gonna treat the people who are the hardest. They're living, they don't have homes. We go home, our, my mattress probably costs more than a rent would be for one of these people. We just need to help people. Our kids are learning from us. They're looking at us. And their behavior downtown is telling me that they're not learning a very good message. This is our opportunity to teach them. We need to do better for our kids and for our town. I didn't put this in my email to you earlier, but as I was sitting here thinking about it, this ordinance is bad for business. I'm just gonna say, 75% of my customers don't live in Haddonfield. They come to our town because they think it's a great place to come visit. It's beautiful. But we have a reputation for being elitist nimby's. And I have to go out, if this ordinance passes, I'm gonna be embarrassed to have a business in town. I'm gonna be embarrassed to live here. I just urge you to reject this ordinance. It's terrible. It's bad for business. It's bad for our town. It's bad for our kids. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ken Lee. I am a resident of Cherry Hill. Although I am a resident of Cherry Hill, I do frequent and support businesses throughout South Jersey, especially Haddonfield. I actually would like to demand answers of sound logic and reasoning from Haddonfield's Town Council regarding this. As an openly gay man, I believe I have the right to fight against this disgusting ordinance. Did you know that a portion of the LGBTQIA+ community is homeless in this country? According to the Trevor Project, about 1 in 4 youth that identify as part of the LGBTQIA+ community are homeless or experience some type of housing instability. Additional to that, New Jersey is known as one of the states that have a significantly higher cost of living than other states. A great example of that is our property taxes. While Camden County has some resources like emergency shelters, the federal government had decided to just halt funding and refuse to give it to states. So this brings up the case of, well, if there aren't any emergency shelters that can hold someone for the night, does this homeless person then go to jail and is then charged with a crime? Who thought this bill was humane? Or who wrote this ordinance that makes any logical sense? Are you more concerned about your property values going down because a homeless person somehow exists? Are you making the brazen assumption that homeless people are automatically violent and cause crime? Is it because the person that's the president now is arresting homeless people and is now claiming it's justified? In what world do we currently live where it should be a crime that someone doesn't have a place to live, especially if they've done nothing else wrong, and especially since the cost of living is so exorbitant that people cannot afford to live? If we stepped out of our comfort zones in other places, in cities such as Camden, and I assure you, in certain parts, you definitely won't get mugged or robbed, you'll see a national epidemic of homelessness and hunger. And I urge you people to not pass this. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Good evening. My name is Mike Hagan. I live on West Summit Avenue. You'll have to excuse me. I'm a little nervous. I was not intending to speak tonight. Certainly not a public speaker either. I decided to speak tonight. I don't come with statistics. I'd rather just talk about my experiences. I appreciate, I, I read about this meeting on social media, and I'm grateful that I've heard about it and for the opportunity to speak. I moved here in 2020. My wife and I moved from Philadelphia. We have three young daughters, four, two, and one. My wife's actually traveling. I got a last-minute babysitter, so I'm appreciative to her as well. And I want to preface what I want to say by saying that, you know, I'm trying to teach my kids respect for others, acceptance for others, and especially, you know, people that are different than us. Kind of hard to do that to a one- and two-year-old, but I'm really trying to hone it down with a four-year-old. And my, my kids are terrible sleepers. I have a coffee in hand right now. I'll probably be getting a coffee very early tomorrow morning. Oftentimes, my girls come with me for early, you know, early trips to one of the coffee shops. And since I've moved here, I can say I've seen an uptick in homelessness, especially during the early wee hours of the morning. And, you know, and I also want to say, I've had great experiences with some of those people. You know, I've had very nice conversations in Starbucks with my kids by my side with people. But this summer alone, I've, I've noticed a change. I've had some somewhat alarming experiences with individuals speaking directly at me or at my kids that have freaked my kids out. I've had to divert my kids' attention from, from public defecation. I didn't know how to explain. I didn't know what was going on in the fountain, maybe getting washed up, what it was, but I had to kind of divert their attention from that. Just about a week ago, we saw a man smoking a cigarette on a school bench very early in the morning, chose to, you know, walk the other way. And again, you know, I'm teaching my kids, people are different, and we're accepting and tolerant and respectful of everyone. But, you know, my kids are really young. I'm not really ready to have some of those conversations just yet. You know, the one thing I heard tonight that, that struck me as interesting was how, you know, passing this amendment is going to strain our, our police, you know, our police force, which is, I guess, already strained. I don't know too much about that, but what I can say is, if this, if this amendment is overturned, what, what will that say? What kind of precedent will that set? Will that invite, and again, I know not every homeless person in Haddonfield is committing the offenses that I've seen with my own eyes, but will it invite more people into town? If it invites more people into town, what kind of offenses are gonna be taking up our police force's time? And, you know, lastly, I just want to say, I think I mentioned this, my wife and I moved here from Philly. We moved here for the schools, the safety. And we don't live in, we don't live on Lane of Acres. We don't live in a million-dollar mansion. But I, I was drawn to this town. I didn't want to move to South Jersey. I'm from Delaware County. I fell in love with Haddonfield when I got here. And I've never looked back. And I love the walkability of this town. And I love the fact that I can just throw my kids in the stroller and, and, and walk around town. But the question I, I would have for the audience, I, I, you know, and others who, who oppose this, is like, you know, should I have to be worried about, like, should I wait until eight o'clock or nine o'clock to walk my kids into town? Or, like, should I have to worry about that? Should my kids, young kids, be, be worried or scared or not want to go with daddy to the coffee shop because of some of the experiences that they've had? You know, I'll leave it with that. I really appreciate everybody else speaking tonight. I've certainly gained some insight and perspective. I'm definitely open to other solutions. I just wanted to get up here and speak about my experience. Thanks.
All right. Thanks, Mike.
Good evening. My name is Colleen Connell. I live in Cherry Hill. My husband, John, and I lived in Haddonfield for 33 years, where we raised our four children. And we're very active in the community. We would be as well if we were still living here. But alas, you've lost us. And you can thank me in advance for being brief. I just wanted to say, reference has already been made to Haddonfield having roots in Quaker founding. It also was a place on the Underground Railroad. It has a heart. Shall we not forget that? Thank you. And thank you for listening.
Thanks, Colleen.
My name is Meg Meyer. I live on, yes, I live on Hopkins Lane. I moved to Haddonfield in 2022. I moved here to live closer to family and to raise my kids. I've worked in healthcare for 15 years, and I have taken care of many unhoused people and people struggling with addiction and mental health issues. These people need compassion. They need resources. And we live in a very privileged community, and we need to come up with ways to help them. Criminalizing it isn't going to fix the problem. It's going to make it worse. We're gonna hit these people with fines and jail time, and they're not gonna be able to find housing and jobs. The minimum wage in New Jersey adds up to $32,000 a year, which is, like, so low compared to what many of us probably make in here. And so if someone has a minimum wage job, they're gonna have trouble getting housing. And if they're here, and we have the ability, we should be looking for resources and using the experts that live within this community to find ways to help these people and support them. We have plenty of churches. We have plenty of healthcare workers, and I'm sure social workers who could donate their time and help us figure this out. But criminalizing it is not the answer. Thank you.
Thanks, Meg.
Hi, my name is Deirdre Gavel. I live in Blackwood.
I'm, I'm sorry, say that again.
My name is Deirdre Gavel.
Deirdre. All right. Thank you. All right, thank you.
And I live in Blackwood and I'm also a member of Haddonfield Friends. Um, when I needed to find a place to worship in this area, that's, that's where I wound up because I found an accepting, a loving, uh, community that I like to think represents Haddonfield. Um, I'm also a veteran.
Thank you.
And I've been homeless. In 2002, I was an engineer. I was working for a company that, um, we, we built equipment that calibrated the sensors that deploy the airbags in your cars. And I was traveling around the world, um, setting up equipment doing that. By the end of 2002, I was homeless. I'd lost my job. I'd lost my family. And it can happen to anyone. In my case, it was due to PTSD. And I spent the next four years in and out of mental hospitals. It can literally happen to anybody. When addressing the problem of homelessness, I'd like you to think of what was going on in World War II when we had bombers and aircraft coming back and they'd be all shot up. And what was the solution? The solution was, we're going to reinforce those parts, those aircraft that got shot. The problem was that those were the planes that made it back. The ones that didn't make it back were shot somewhere else. They had engines destroyed, not wings. And when you're looking at a problem like homelessness, getting these people off the streets, that's the easiest solution. That's looking at the bullet holes in the wings. It's not looking at the ones that are destroying the engines and taking the aircraft out of the sky. It requires a lot more creative thinking than just, let's move them away. Let's get rid of them. So I would urge you to try and think more creatively and look for the solution to the problem as opposed to the solution to the symptoms. Thank you.
Thanks, Deirdre.
Hi, I'm Lauren McGlade. I live on Center Street in Haddonfield. And I'm just so proud of the turnout tonight. I think it's been really overwhelming and really moving to hear everybody's experiences. I don't think I have much to add, except I have a lot of questions. And some of the questions, um, have been asked before, but I just want to underline them. Some, I don't know if some of these questions have been asked already. Um, number one, I'd love to get specific data from public safety, specifically how many unhoused people there are in Haddonfield that this law would affect. Um, and also how frequently this is happening, how many occurrences there are. Um, I've heard 11 people. I've heard a handful of people. This sounds like a problem that maybe we can tackle in other ways. Um, so that's my first question. Um, my next question is, um, what informed the solution, uh, to make this amendment? Did all three commissioners consult other towns and other experts in homelessness? Who were they? Um, and what did they tell you? So I'd love to know that. Um, you know, I'm not an expert on this topic myself, except in the, in the reading that I've done. And what I've heard tonight is, is that, um, you know, these types of laws don't work. So, um, I'd just love to know how you came to this conclusion that you wanted to do this as the solution. Also, I wanted to know what would happen if someone refuses to go to an emergency shelter? Um, what would law enforcement do? Um, would they be arrested? Would they be fined? Um, and there are many reasons that people listen tonight on why someone would deny emergency shelter. Um, so it's totally valid. Um, and what happens if the shelters are full? And where would the law enforcement bring them? Um, also, I just want to, um, say my disappointment that this was introduced during a holiday week when many people are on vacation. I think the turnout tonight was overwhelming. I think many advocacy groups got the word out. Whoop, sorry. And I think this is wonderful, but I think many residents, uh, are away this week and are away in August. And I'm just disappointed on, on that timing. Um, another point that was brought up tonight, Summit, New Jersey passed an ordinance very similar to this. And the ACLU has already filed a lawsuit saying, um, it's unconstitutional. Uh, this is making national news in Summit, New Jersey. Is this what we want for our town right now? Um, not only that, but you know, we can't afford another lawsuit. So why would we want to bring that upon ourselves? We're already in the hole so much. Um, it just seems like a huge liability. Uh, my hope is that this ordinance does not go through. I guess my last question is what happens tonight? Um, so this is the first reading. Does it need two people to vote it in to make it to, uh, the second reading? Or could this die at the table tonight? And I'd love to know, um, what can happen tonight because I'd love to see this die tonight. And I think that the overwhelming, you know, turnout tonight kind of backs that up, that maybe we should come together for a different solution. I think, um, we all want, there, there are so many experts in this and so many people who have been through this that I think that we have the opportunity to learn from them and do this right. And make meaningful change in Haddonfield and, and really set our legacy for, uh, you know, what, what we wanted to be. And, and this town is just such an amazing, beautiful town. And I think that's why the three of you are up there representing our town and why we're all here. Um, you know, because we have a big stake in, in the future of this town for us and for our children. Um, and I also just want to call from everybody who's sitting in the audience to come up here and also have your voice, uh, be heard. It's, it's hard for me to public speak, um, but I think it's so important for, for them to hear. There's going to be a vote tonight. Um, you know, there's been a lot of people speaking their mind tonight, but I think everyone should be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren.
Sean O'Connor, Beachwood Avenue.
Okay.
Uh, I don't have a lot to add to the conversation. I think I've been, um, moved by a lot, a lot of the words that people have said. And, um, I just wanted to lend my voice among those who, uh, are opposing the ordinance. Um, I think when I first read about it, uh, as someone who, uh, maybe lost faith long ago, but I still feel like I try to live my life with the Judeo-Christian values that I, were instilled in me when I was young. Um, I was struck by what felt like a lack of compassion in this ordinance. Um, I think, uh, I have a lot of admiration for people who run for public office, for the commissioners who do so much hard work. And I believe could only do so with the intention of improving this town. So I believe everybody is trying to do what's best for this town. But what strikes me also as someone who works in clinical research is that I couldn't find strong evidence for the effectiveness of the types of measures that were being proposed. I think I, that's what I think I would like to see along the lines of what the last speaker said is, what justifies these methods? Who, which towns have adopted these methods? What are the, the positive gains that have been had in other towns that would justify something that feels so, uh, discordant with those morals that I, I described, um, uh, being raised with? And I think I would just appeal to the commissioners to, to provide that evidence so that if, if something like this were to go forward, we'd have to have good, uh, good understanding, a good confidence that this will accomplish the goals that are, it's set out to do. Because as people have said, it just feels like this will be counterproductive. So I'd really like to, to see that evidence. And if that can't be put forward, I, I would also appeal, um, to delay this, as others have said. Uh, work with the other organizations that have been, uh, voicing their willingness to do that hard work. I, I would just hate, for this town, I came here just, uh, less than two years ago for a lot of the same reasons everybody comes here. It's just, it's a beautiful town with so much to offer. Uh, and I'd hate to see the town, uh, attempt an, an easy, uh, and ineffective solution to a really hard problem. And I hope, uh, I think I, I've heard so much passion in this room. And I think it's inspiring to me and it makes me question, you know, what do I do to, to address this problem? And I think it, it makes me feel like if there's a, a better solution, something I can feel more confident in, I'd be happy to do my part, to do more. Um, so I think, uh, though I came here with some, some anger and some frustration, I, I leave feeling a little inspired, or at least hopeful, that we were headed towards a solution that will work and that we can all feel like we've done our parts to help the, the people who are, who most need it. Uh, thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Hi, my name is Kimberly McGrath. I'm a lifelong resident. I live on, uh, Concord in Haddonfield now. Uh, generations of my family members have lived here and helped build this town into what it is today. Before I say what I'm going to say, I want to preface it by saying I'm a fierce advocate of homeless and abused dogs. I work extensively, I just moved back from Los Angeles to my hometown, with, uh, dogs on Skid Row. I have fostered, I have adopted. I give thousands of dollars yearly. I go to court cases. I write lawmakers. I am active and an advocate for people, dogs suffering in need. There is another side to this story that has not been addressed tonight. And it's serious. It's not an inconvenience. It's not something that is just unsightly. It's a serious concern. I'm going to start with what's going on in Haddonfield the last few months. And then I'm going to tell you what I just came from and what it turned into. So Haddonfield does offer the unhoused help first. They offer them help. What?
Talk to us.
Oh, talk, okay. So they do offer help. And the, the reality is the ho- uh, the help is often refused. And by law, these people can refuse the help. That is their right. So you could build the greatest shelters or the greatest treatment facilities, um, but it doesn't mean people want to or will accept that help. So now my question comes down to what is going to be done when the help is refused? How long can the people stay? One day, one week, indefinitely? Those concrete things need to be addressed. So I'm going to go through a few concrete examples from the last few weeks. Last week, a man vomited in King's Court in front of kids trying to frequent, um, a, a local business, the ice cream parlor. He proceeded to stumble along with a toothless woman. Did that hurt anybody? No, not that time. Was it human excrement? No, it wasn't. It was vomit. But children should not be forced to be subjected to that. A woman lived in King's Court for nearly a month with three overflowing shopping carts, sprawled with bags on community benches all day. She frequently blocked the ability to use community bike racks with large carts. She took up considerable common space at a business entryway. She rejected help daily. It's all on record. Her choice prevailed over residents and business owners' rights. Some residents of King's Court have recently felt hostages in their own apartment. They were unable to safely walk their dogs at night because a grown man, stranger to the community, often appearing to be nodding out on drugs, slept in the pavilion for weeks, leaving trash every morning for the community to clean up. An unhoused man was found dead on the sidewalk in front of a business just a week ago. That is traumatic for adults to witness, let alone children. I recently personally encountered with my young child, an unhoused, unhinged woman screaming profanities at an elderly, elderly man outside the Little Hen. It did not escalate that time, but it easily could have. And it was terrifying for my child to encounter. These are not harmless situations. They're serious and they're ongoing safety and sanitation issues that need to be addressed immediately and handled accordingly. There's a few others. The man that's sleeping in the post office, who the post office workers come in and, and find, you know, urine all over the floor. That's not fair. That's a health hazard. There are many other examples I can give you, like the woman who was brushing her teeth and washing her hair in the children's fountain a week or so ago. That's a sanitation problem. It's a problem for her because there's bacteria in that pond. There's rocks and moss. And it, it, it could spread, um, diseases. So I just want to say this. There's an ordinance put forth saying we can't allow sleeping downtown. People can accept the help and be relocated to licensed facilities or shelters capable and equipped to properly help them. They can leave voluntarily or they can be escorted away by police. We, I am not trying to criminalize homelessness. So what we can't do is choose to live, they cannot choose by choice, reject all the help offered to them, choose to live in public spaces, litter, use them as bathrooms, remain intoxicated and unstable around children. It's dangerous. So residents have rights also. And those rights are being trampled on in the name of compassion for individuals who reject help. Yeah, I don't know how much time I have, I have left, but I want to, how much? So I didn't even get to what I just left in Los Angeles. And it was, it was radical. I lived in a residential neighborhood where one block, one tent, who we used to give clothes and food to, turned into an encampment. And I was walking over human excrement. And I was, you know, seeing needles and people shooting up outside. So here's my question. On night one, when we leave here tonight, if somebody unhoused in needs, and I say give everything to the veterans, everything, they, they belong, they deserve everything for free. I want to say that too. But when someone unhoused in our town refuses help, what's your plan to protect the residents and the business owners? How long is this ordinance going to say they can stay? One day, one week, indefinitely? Let's, let's define that. And are those, um, commenting, well, I won't even say that. I won't even get into offering your own property because it's neither here nor there. Although I do for homeless and abused animals. So that's my time. So I just, I, I really feel like those things need to be addressed. They're not, they're not inconveniences. They're real serious concerns. We have young children. They have to be dealt with until somebody, like, just God forbid somebody, like, one of these kids get hurt. That woman could have snapped in an instant on us. It was terrifying. So that's what I would say. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Hello, hi. My, hi. Nice seeing you. So my name is Andrew Boddy. Last name is B O D I. Me and my family, we do have two businesses downtown, 141 King's Highway and 139. So yes, me and my family, we have two businesses downtown. And my parents are residents in this town as well. We've been running our business for eight years. So I agree with that we need to connect individuals with housing, health and social services before enforcement where possible. I agree and I empathize with that. I cannot give any further comment. It's a complex topic, how it should be handled, this group of people. But I'll talk as a witness what is happening. Every day in downtown, me and my family, we're there seven days a week. We never close, 365 days, been there for the last eight years. And it has changed. It's been disturbing. We have homeless people. We had a lot of incidents where our staff had to call the police. And they do have our phone calls. We had couples fighting in front of our restaurant. Like mentally, we, we had to call the police on. We have people passing out on our restroom, homeless people again. We had Starbucks people leaving for a while at 9:00 PM. And my question, it's, I think, even when you, like, when you leaving somewhere, you should be identified who you are, first of all. Like, when you apply even to send a house, we should see like where you come from, what's your name, last name? If you have any active warrant as well, because you never know. So that has been, it's been, this town has been unsafe. And I'm asking just for accountability, removing obstruction, improving cleanliness and ensuring safety. The key concerns that we have is, and that's just not me. I talked to almost every business owner and they all are concerned, even though they're not here. So this is serious. And I'm a witness and I have my staff witness and we can really love witnesses here, if you want to hear from other people. Public sidewalk obstruction, sleepers on the public sidewalk block, block access to outdoor dining storefront at night, day and night. Safety for children and families. After hours pedestrian traffic raises, safe, raises, uh, pedestrian, pedestrian traffic raises, safety risk for kids and residents. Potential dangerous behavior, unpredictable or harmful actions around bicycle and pedestrians near the sidewalk. Cleanliness and image, litter and debris accumulate around obstruction harming downtown cleanliness and family-friendly image. Nudity in public spaces. Exposure is inappropriate for a family town and makes visitors uncomfortable. Permit compliance, we get outdoor permit, we apply for having our chairs and tables. It'd be many times that we cannot put it, we cannot operate, losing revenue because we don't have space to. So as a business owner, I ask for this action. I'm not saying what's the right way or the wrong way. We empathize with everybody and we agree that these people need help. But I'm talking as a witness perspective, being every day downtown Haddonfield. And the, from the last eight years that we've been downtown, this last year has been very, very bad. And it's been very concerning. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Orem. I live in Stratford. Uh, I think, Orem, yeah. Um, I think as a country, uh, I think we've come to an understanding that incarceration or detainment is not for the good. It is just punishment and isolation. Uh, there's no service, like, there's not an opportunity to go into any of that and leave as a better person than when you went in. We're not there yet. We desperately need to get there. Uh, and using that as a solution is a non-starter. I feel like there's a large disconnect from people. I'm, I'm hearing from a lot of comments, like, I'm glad they haven't had anywhere close to the experience of being in that position or being anywhere close. They're very separated and that is fantastic for them. Um, but it is not a solution to just isolate people and lock them away and just forget about them as they are just struggling. Because that could, as so many people have said, could be, be any one of us. It just takes one event and any of us could just be right there out in the streets. We, we really need to be able to focus resources on, it is very telling, uh, that this is brought forth with no, uh, there's no mention of how it will actually be addressed. Um, in the language, it just says they'll go where they go, basically. Um, and we'll just remove them from the streets from you. You don't have to think about them anymore. Um, it is very telling that, especially in this era, that that is just being pushed out. I think people would very much like to have na- a name or specific names to who decided in leadership that this is the best way to deal with people who have nothing right now and genuinely deserve all the resources that are available to them. Because I know they're available. Uh, and if they're not available, they can be made available. Um, we definitely deserve to have the names. Because if you, the idea of knowing how to address this or or the idea of how to address this is so, so beyond you in this moment, maybe you're just not fit for the position you're in. That's all.
All right. Thanks, Orem.
Hi. My name is Sam Gaddy. I live in Audubon. And I'd like to speak in strong opposition to this proposal. It sounds like from a lot of people who support this proposal that their concerns are safety, public health, things like that. And on that front, I agree. It is unsafe for people to be living on the streets. I think you'd be hard pressed to find somebody that disagrees with that. You'd be hard pressed to find somebody that likes the idea of homelessness anywhere. And people that oppose this proposal are not speaking out in favor of homelessness. They're looking for an actual solution to this problem. And it's been clear through different cities across the U.S. that this is not a solution to the problem of homelessness. There's been a few people that have said, well, you know, the homelessness, the homeless people, they reject help. They reject shelters. And even if we built the best shelters in the world, they would still reject them. To that, I would say, have we tried building the best shelters in the world? Are the shelters that homeless people have access to the best shelters in the world, are they even adequate? Are they even safe? Are they even available? We have an opportunity to actually build those. We have an ability, we have the opportunity to see if these solutions would actually solve homelessness instead of just kicking this can down the road, instead of forcing people out into other towns, instead of criminalizing homelessness. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
Hi. My name's Jonathan. I'm a resident of Haddon Township. And so many other people here have spoken so eloquently about the need for compassion for those who are less fortunate than us. And, but I'd like to echo what one of the other speakers here noticed, which is that one of the things that this ordinance would criminalize is, you know, public urination and defecation. And like, I'm sure everyone in this room, I don't want to see public urination and defecation. However, I also have some health issues that occasionally mean that I need to use the bathroom more frequently. And so, whether or not there are public restrooms available is something that I notice very, very acutely. Haddonfield, also my own town, Haddon Township, Philadelphia, our whole region really, does not have adequate public facilities. And I am fortunate that I have a home and that I can go back to, even though sometimes I need to plan, am I going to go out right now? Will I be able to get back to a restroom easily? I can only imagine what it's like for those who don't have a home to go back to, whose only option is I need to find something that may not be, like, you have to go to the bathroom at 10:00 at night. That's something that happens. If there's no facilities available, where you are, you have to go somewhere. We should make those facilities available. Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Hi. I'm Arabella. I live on West End Ave. I wasn't planning on talking tonight, but I was both disheartened and, I guess, heartened to hear everybody and what they were saying. I felt a little scared because I'm probably among the younger people in this crowd, but I just graduated, and I spent four years in North Philadelphia, which, if anyone has been to North Philadelphia, is not the most, I guess, crime-free place. And I've lived among people who are of varying different housing situations and talked to people in various housing situations. And just to be clear, I am against this ordinance. This is not the way to deal with something like this. And I know I'm only 22. I don't have the experience that a lot of people in this room have had with their education and their working. But I think it's important to listen to the people who are experts in this area. And I had an undergrad degree in things where I did research. And if research is showing that the way to deal with homelessness is not incarceration, we should probably listen to those people. I also want to say that I was a student at Haddonfield Memorial High School. Only, I guess, I graduated five years ago. And I saw a lot of the things that people are mentioning that homeless people did from high schoolers. I've seen public urination. I've seen drug use. I've seen lots, I don't know where the mic went. I've seen lots of hatred and lots of animosity just within my classmates. The difference is, their parents had the money to pay for the lawyers to get them out of that. So, they can still go to Yale and Harvard, and they can get scholarships, and they can do all the things that they need for their future. The difference is, when you're in a situation and you don't have the backup resources to get yourself out of that situation, you're just going to end up going further and further down. And I ask for the people who say that they are uncomfortable with seeing public urination, defecation. I'm not saying that's good. And we definitely need to deal with those things in a way of helping people. But one, if someone is refusing housing, like so many people have said, that must mean the housing's not adequate because would you, who in their right mind would rather live on the streets than live in a shelter? That must mean something's wrong with the shelter. And then, I think my last point is that I'm uncomfortable with public urination. But what made me more uncomfortable is my friend who died by suicide from drug addiction. I'm uncomfortable with people who, you know, are just laying out on the street. But I'm more uncomfortable by the fact that they don't have anywhere to go, not just that they're there, but that they don't have anywhere to go to after they get kicked out of here. So, I really want to call on everybody's empathy. I really want to call on everyone to think about their own people in their life that they love and how, like everyone said, it's possible to end up in this situation. We just don't want to think about it. And I think compassion is the right response to this. I think hope is the right response to this. And I am really hoping that I can continue to call Haddonfield my home and be proud to say I'm from here.
Thanks, Arabella.
My name is Rachel Tannen, and I live at Beachwood Avenue. Concerns have been raised about behaviors such as bathing in the fountain, urinating in the fountain, or yelling at people. But none of these issues truly threaten our safety. There are compassionate solutions, such as locking the post office at night or issuing and issuing keys to people who need them or providing a designated place for the unhoused to bathe so that they don't need to use the fountain. I understand that some constituents worry about their children witnessing these behaviors. As a parent of a three- and five-year-old, what I want my children to see is a town that responds with compassion and creativity and support for all its residents, not punishment and exclusion. I oppose the amendment to Chapter 158. Many laws criminalizing homelessness have existed in cities across the country since the 1990s, giving scholars decades of outcome data. There is no evidence that such laws meaningfully reduce homelessness. What they do is push vulnerable people further into the margins of society. Such a policy does not reflect the compassion and community values that Haddonfield is known for. Is criminalizing instead of helping the homeless truly the legacy our leadership wants to have? How will you explain choosing exclusion over compassion when future generations look back on this decision? There are better paths forward, ones that focus on services, housing, and support rather than punishment. Commissioners Seidel and Troy, please listen to your constituents. Please choose compassion.
Thanks, Rachel.
Hi. Hi. Is this on?
Is the green light on?
Hi. Yeah. Hi. I'm Diane Herbert. I live in Audubon, very close by. I do come to Haddonfield, and I spend my money here. I eat at your restaurants, and I shop in your businesses. And when I have relatives and friends visiting, I bring them to Haddonfield, and we spend our money here. And if you criminalize homelessness, I may reconsider doing that. I may go to a different town instead and spend my money somewhere else. I do understand the people who have spoken in favor of this amendment. I can understand, after living in a small city for a little, for some years in upstate New York, I lived in Ithaca, where there was a lot of homelessness, and I dealt with some of these issues right outside of my house. So, I can understand. But it's a very complicated problem, and criminalizing these people is really not... It's just a very inhumane way of dealing with it. And I will say that, as some other people have mentioned, it does seem like a fascist way of dealing with it. And I am a member of Indivisible. I'm a member of New Jersey 50501, South Jersey for Palestine, as well as some other organizations. And I can tell you that people are very primed for protesting right now. I'm not sure that, you know, this would be protested, but I would just say be prepared for that because there are protests in this area, in this region. Every week, there are protests all over right now. We are primed for protesting. Protesters are proficient at spreading things on social media right now, good at getting media coverage in newspapers. And it's just something to consider because I think that is something that other speakers have alluded to. And are you going to want that negative press? Like, I don't, you know, I don't feel like I have the answer for you, but it does seem like you have a lot of professionals in the community. You have a lot of people who you can reach out to, to access, to find other solutions. And then I just wanted to mention that over 50% of people who are homeless have a history of traumatic brain injury. And I also have a history of traumatic brain injury. I'm a veterinarian. I was working, you know, as a professional, doing surgery, handling emergency cases and everything. And then I get hit on the head very hard, was fully disabled. And if I did not have a very supportive family, I would have become homeless. There's no doubt in my mind about that. I was one of the lucky people who had a family who just swooped in and took care of me and made sure I got access to excellent healthcare. And a lot of people who get severe traumatic brain injuries do not have that. They do not have that family support. And people with traumatic brain injuries who don't have family support are at high risk of becoming homeless. So, there are a lot of underlying problems. And these people sometimes just cannot, they're just not capable of organizing their lives and having the focus to take care of themselves. So, anyway, I know it is causing problems in your community, and I understand that it's difficult. So, thank you.
No, thank you, Diane.
Hello there. My name is Julia. I actually live in Haddon Township, but I live on Westmont Ave, so I'm a hop, skip, and a jump away from Haddonfield. Everyone pretty much said how I feel. I just wanted to express as a board-certified music therapist and a mental health professional and a proud member of South Jersey DSA, I wanted to share my voice in saying that homelessness is a very complicated issue that doesn't have a simple answer. This is something a lot of us know. This amendment will only criminalize homelessness and not solve any public safety problems that were expressed tonight. Amendments should be created based on research and facts, not opinions and cruelty. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia.
My name is Marta Hall. My husband and I have, my husband Pete and I have lived in Haddonfield for 45 years. I live in the muse. We've raised two children here. They went to the schools here, swore they'd never come back after college. And now they're raising six grandchildren who are attending school, nursery school, and the elementary schools here. And I just want to urge the commissioners to go back and think about working with the churches and the social organizations and the professionals who spoke tonight and who were represented here tonight to come up with a solution for something that is happening, that the solution where we can all be proud of that solves everyone's problems because I think that could be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Marta.
Hello. My name is Alfred Sauter. I live on Mount Vernon Avenue in Haddonfield. I think if I could encapsulate, I mean, there's a lot of quotations going on today, and I feel compelled to quote as well. This one's from Horace. And if I could encapsulate what everyone is trying to say, it would be this. Utato nomine de fabula narrator, which means, change only the name, and the story is you. And I feel like that's who we are. Do we really want to arrest ourselves? There's a little bit of each one of us in a homeless person. I see it. And I wouldn't have seen it before if I didn't go to high school where they made me reach out to the homeless people. I went to school in North Philadelphia at St. Joe's Prep, and my son goes there as well. And I think I would have gone through my whole life really not meeting a homeless person at all. And I'm so glad that I had that opportunity where we met with people in North Philadelphia. We met with people in Camden. I went to Appalachia for three weeks. If you've ever read the book, The Other America, you know what I'm talking about. It's really a facet of American life, and not just uniquely American. It's a human thing. There's homelessness. Where there's homes, there's going to be people without homes. My son and I and my wife, we went to Joseph's House in Camden, and it was a really great experience. I had a lot of fun. I had a lot of fun helping people out. I had a lot of fun meeting people. I had a lot of fun seeing my son interact with the homeless as well. My wife loves it so much that she dedicates her Friday mornings and afternoons over at Joseph's House. I'm a teacher. I've been a teacher for 27 years. And this is a huge opportunity for the youth of Haddonfield to really learn, learn about homelessness. I know some parents came up, or some people came up and said, you know, what am I going to tell my kid if they see a homeless person on the street? Well, you might actually have to answer their question. You might actually have to help them understand that the system is not perfect. It is broken, and there's going to be more homelessness in the near future. So, just to see the fact that there is homelessness and what can we do about it? If I could sum up what I learned in four years at the prep and what my son is learning right now, it's two things. If it's boiled down with homelessness and helping other people, it was, first, you can ignore them. You can arrest them. You can make sure that they don't have the same opportunities that you were lucky enough to have, or you can help them. And for the youth here in Haddonfield, who might go through their years without ever meeting a homeless person, it'd be a great disservice to them. There should be outreach programs for them, just like we had at the prep. This can be done. There's a lot of intellectual capacity here, a lot of people with big hearts in this town. I've met them. They're great people, and they have solutions. We can really do this. Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me? My name is Elena Selena. I actually live in downtown Haddonfield. And I actually don't have a strict point of view about the incarcerating homeless and stuff. I'm actually here to talk about my side of the story and give you my opinion, okay? Not maybe worldwide opinion, but my personal opinion, since we're here. Not maybe worldwide opinion, but my personal opinion since we're here to hear all our opinions. So my personal side of the story first. I've been here in the US for almost 25 years. And actually, I just wanted to remark here when people say it's a privilege, privilege. What do you mean privilege? It's all hard work. A lot of people are coming here in the US to fulfill the American dreams. It's hard work. This money didn't fall on our heads. So a lot of times it has nothing to do with privilege. It's hard work. But when it comes to the homeless issue, I arrived to this country and I didn't have a house. I didn't know a single person here in this country, no one. Okay, so I actually know what it feels like from firsthand experience. And I would not have refused the help, just so you know. If somebody approached me and said, ma'am, we have some for you, you know, somewhere to sleep or something, I don't think I would have refused. But what I would not do, I would not urinate on the street. I would not defecate on the street, for sure. I would have preferred the worst shelter in the world, not to urinate in public. So at the end of the conversation, homeless people, just like non-homeless people, they are people. And it's our own choices what to do with this. We, it's, it's a personal choice. We can choose what to do. And, and it's at the end of the, of the day, it's their own choice too. But I'm telling you my point of view. I would not have refused help. And when people do refuse help, it's a conscious decision. That's one, that's another side. Now, how is that letting people to sleep on the street for one night or two nights helping them? It's, it's helping us feel good about themselves, ourselves actually. Or we're so good, we're so compassionate, we're letting people sleep on the streets. But is it helping them? Giving them a job would help them a lot more than just that we feel good about ourselves. One night, okay, two nights, three nights. But then how is that, letting them sleep indefinitely on the street helping them? One person, two person, three people? How many people eventually would be allowed to, to camp out on the street? And I don't mind, but since we're here and we all care about everybody else, how about caring about the residents of Haddonfield too? We, you are commissioners here too. So you're elected to help us all. But I make sure to talk about safety here. A lot of people here, including myself, when we don't encounter the, this firsthand, we have very different opinion of these encounters. And people who did have experience, they have different point of view. My house was broken into. My car was broken into two times. I got three bicycles stolen. My children were chased from school by, I don't know whether it was homeless men. I don't care frankly speaking. Are they homeless or they have home? I care about safety. This town was always about safe, safety. But it's no longer safe. I, I'm telling you, I don't feel safe. And really, and maybe it's actually a little bit ironic, but all these people who saying compassionate, we can do better. Yes, we can do better. But are you ready to do it personally? Are you personally ready to say, we can do better? Well, maybe these people can sleep in your houses in front, front lawns and stuff. Let's just show by example. It's very good to be compassionate at the expense of other people and in their safety. Let's just trade it. Yeah, that's very, that's, that's maybe not popular opinion, but I salute to people who housed people themselves, who, who said, you know, coming over. Not everybody is capable of doing that. Not, not everybody for sure. And let's not be hypocrites. Oh my gosh, how, how kind we are. Yes, we're all kind and most of us religious people and stuff like that. And then we really care about them. But if you're not ready for the Uber to drop the people on your floor, front yard and have them camp on your own yard or defecate on your own front porch for your children to be, to step into that, well, let's just not, you know, speak the empty words. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name's Marion. I live in Haddonfield, just around the corner.
I'm sorry, can you say your name again?
Sorry?
Say your name again, please.
Marion.
Marion.
Marion Rafe, yeah. I live on Lincoln Avenue. And I've been in Haddonfield for 23 years. Our son went through the Haddonfield schools and we've been very fortunate to live here. We've appreciated all the privilege that we have here and the safety has been a very important part as well. I'm also a social worker by training and a mental health professional. And I, I'm aware that there's a lot of research on homelessness. I've conducted some myself and that there are a lot of factors that go into why someone is homeless and that homeless people are not necessarily harming anybody other than perhaps themselves. So I really think it's important to separate criminalization from being unhoused. Yes, we need to have a safe community, but I'm not sure that the homeless people are responsible for making us feel unsafe. So I think we need to look at what the causes are for safety, if that's what the issue is, and address those and address the causes of homelessness also and have social services. And it costs probably more to put people in jail than it does to provide them with social services that would help them to find housing. So I just would urge you to consider, reconsider and vote against this criminalization of unhoused people. Thank you.
Thank you, Marion.
Hello, my name is Megan Marshall. I live on West Summit. And if we're daughters, I teach Pilates around the corner at Opal Wellness. And I stayed here this long, so I, I thought I should come up and share some of my brief thoughts. I paid attention when quite a number of parents mentioned that they didn't know how to address this issue with their kids and that they were shielding their kids from seeing the homeless and skirting around the corner or, you know, ducking into a restaurant. And I think that's a moment where a real opportunity is lost. I think we can have honest conversations with our kids. My kids aren't that old. I'd be willing to tell them that jobs don't pay enough, that houses are too expensive, that there isn't an adequate safety system for when people get sick.
Megan, it's hard to hear you. You're not talking to us.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you hear all of that?
It was getting hard.
Okay, great. And that also there are people who are hoarding money who could be sharing. And these are things I think we could talk to our children about when we see the homeless people. And just go back to my notes real quick. And I would want to say to them that this creates unfairness, but the good news is there's always something we can do about it. At the very least, we can acknowledge the unhoused when we walk past, making eye contact, maybe nodding, perhaps offering some change from our pockets. But if the unhoused have been unfor, enforcably removed, we lose the opportunity for that conversation and we perpetuate a lie that this problem does not exist. Thank you very much.
Hi there. My name is Ira Rosman. I live on Lincoln Avenue.
Hi, Ira.
And I'm a professor of psychology at Rutgers. And I'm going to break a rule of good lecturing and read something into the record, which is sometimes done at hearings, okay? So this is from the National Alliance to End Homelessness. It makes three points, which are brief, and I'll read them and then one more paragraph and then I'll just make a two-sentence statement. So the three points are about criminalizing homelessness. The heading here is that criminalization prevents communities from solving homelessness. Point one, people, and this is the homeless people, lose trust in and connections to service providers and other resources, including medical personnel treating physical and/or mental health conditions and street outreach staff working toward housing connections. Point two, health conditions, the health of the homeless people worsen and safety risks increase as people move into more marginal and environmentally hazardous locations and the availability of protective factors like community ties decrease. These dynamics contribute to significantly higher mortality rates for people experiencing unsheltered homelessness compared with people who are sheltered and housed. Point number three, local expenditures rack up as already understaffed and overburdened emergency responders are forced to divert scarce time and resources to enforce and respond to these punitive policies. These additional emergency costs do not address underlying housing and service needs, nor do they consistently reduce crime, address public health concerns, or decrease the presence of unsheltered homelessness or public perception of it. Here's the key paragraph. Each one of these points is backed by years of peer-reviewed research. Criminalization ordinances have existed for decades, yet there is no empirical evidence that these punitive policies reduce homelessness. Pairing permanent housing with accessible services for unhoused people remain effective at solving homelessness and often save money. For a full review of the literature, see the alliance's research summaries, and I will send this to you folks as professors do. And just in conclusion, I urge you to not only consult your consciences and your hearts and think of your legacy as other people have said, but read the research because the research tells us what's effective, what works, what causes more problems. And I urge you to think about that in making this important decision. I would not be proud to be from Haddonfield, to be living, Haddonfield resident if this ordinance is passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we get to the next speaker, there's, there's still a lot of time. And Ira, you reminded me, because I am too at a university, that I would, my, my, the students would kill me if we went two hours and 45 minutes without a bio break. So I'm calling a five-minute bio break for us because if you want us to listen to you, we have to not be paying attention to our bladders. So give us a couple of minutes. We'll be right back. All right, we're back in.
Hi, I could use this. My name is Michael Farrell. I live in Haddon Township on Westmont Ave, like about, about a block away. I often walk into Haddonfield. But some of the, some of the speakers brought up many great points tonight. I also am urging you to reject this. Some of the things that I did in here tonight include, you know, homelessness is a very complicated issue. And we have many systems in this country that are interdependent and many crises at the moment, one of which is healthcare. The current administration has recently cut Medicare/Medicaid by $1 trillion. And I'd hate to see people lose access to that healthcare coverage or go into medical debt, which is unfortunately more common than it should be in this country as a developed nation, and then lose access to their housing as a result of that, to no fault of their own. And I think as many other people have stated tonight, that there's many experts that you can consult to resolve and analyze and look at this from a different perspective, one of empathy. And some of the other issues that were brought up tonight include public urination and, and things of that nature. And I for one believe that's an issue of service. I think we can do better as a society. And plenty of other companies have shown this to be the case. Company like Valve, for example, solved this with game pirating. Gabe Newell said it was a, a problem with the service and access to it. It prevents pirating because it's easier to access the things that are, that people are looking for. And it's much more affordable than jailing someone that's already in some of the most difficult moments of their life. So I would just say, end this and say, please consult experts. There's plenty of examples throughout the world. And look at it from a point of empathy. Thank you.
Good evening. Joshua Haas from Belmar. I just had two quick questions, one of them in response to some questions from other folks. I just want to clarify, it's not like if this amendment doesn't pass, suddenly public urination is legal, right? That's already illegal, I assume?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And the second thing is, I think it would be useful to know, since part of the amendment requires that you use a public restroom, like if, we could perhaps get a list of how many public restrooms are available in the town and if any of them are open 24 hours, I think that would be useful to understand the consequences of the amendment. Thank you.
All right, I'm, I'm not an auctioneer. Well, it's, it's actually public comment. This isn't a back and forth, so if you have a comment to make, go right ahead. No, no, we've been taking questions the whole time. Well, please, it, this, this is a comment addressed to us. It could be in the form of a question.
My name is Maureen Dodson. I live on Colonial Avenue. And my question is, the situation that some of the business owners described was behavior that I'm assuming is already criminal behavior in our community. There's already laws against pooping in front of a business and throwing your garbage on the ground. And there's laws against breaking and entering a building, a car, breaking a window, criminal mischief. We already have those laws, correct? And we have, they're enforced already. So this, the only thing that's different is it would be criminal to sleep on a bench outside between dusk and dawn. Is there anything else that's different than what's already illegal in Haddonfield?
So I'll rephrase your question. What is different?
What is different?
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
And if the businesses are feeling compromised, that their customers don't feel safe or people may not want to eat outside, or like Liz with her real estate business, shouldn't we already be dealing, and how would you know if the person who did that was a homeless person versus just a local, just someone who's, I don't, like, are all these people causing these crimes, sleeping on our street every single night? I only ever see, when I walk late or early, one or two people. I feel like I've gotten, I know who these two ladies are. I know a couple gentlemen in town who I see, they're kind of denizens. I don't know if they're homeless, but they spend their day on our, on King's Highway all day. They walk. I see them very far away from here sometimes because they leave and go wherever they live. And then I see them come very early in the morning sometimes back on bike or by foot. They spend their day here. I don't know if they're the ones causing this mischief, but I feel like if the only thing we're going to, to do in this piece of legislation is criminalize sleeping outside, I don't, I don't think there's any value in this. If we, everything else that's causing the problems is already illegal, then we should, we should be able to enforce those laws and take care of the problem without introducing other legislation that criminalizes someone for having nowhere to go. That's all.
Thanks, Maureen. You've had us, you've had a lunch. There's only one turn each person. Thank you anyway. No, there's not a separate question section. We were taking questions. No, no, that's, this isn't changing and giving time to each other. This is a meeting to give us information. You've had your bite at the apple. So I'm going to move ahead. All right, that's okay. What did you say? No, Herb, no. Herb, no. It's how it works. So, and there are more people who are still waiting. So, so I'm going to move to online. Seeing no more first timers in the room. So I believe the person who has had their marathon hand up first is.
I can't read it.
Yeah, I can't either. Yep, there you go. It's just so long and it's too far away.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ms. Pringle Theresa, and I serve in many capacities of homelessness. I want to thank you all for coming out, but I would like you to think about.
I didn't mean to interrupt town.
Oh, I am from Newark. I'm not from Haddonfield, but I want you to think about something. I serve as a state advisory board member, and I've had lived experience coming out of Union County, Westfield, New Jersey. And the point of what I want to say is that there were some good points. I've survived homelessness and I have my own place, but have you thought of the possibility of lawsuits? And we look at homelessness, and I've looked at the room for quite some time, and what we're not taking into account, everybody doesn't start out hooked on drugs or alcohol or mental health. Having experienced homelessness, you have to fight to keep your sanity. And what I'm saying to you, much like Rich said, I see quite a few people on the call, Matthew Hertz, Raissa, Raquel, and the DCA Advisory Board, is that there comes a time where you need to get boots on the ground, people who have experience doing this work and are successful at this work, because it's a point in time where after looking at the rooms, for any of you that want to do the research, as I always say, we have executive orders coming down that will affect a great many people, no matter what your income is. One trip to the doctors, one need of assistance living or nursing home can throw you into homelessness if you don't have the resources. So my suggestion is, and I understand the business perspective because I am a business owner, however, I think at this point that it would be wise to table this and speak to the Rich Unakis Community, Community and Development Network of New Jersey, New Jersey Coalition, Monarch Housing, who does the point in time count, as well as others who are doing this work well. And the reason I said this is because what happens is when you have no programs or services that are effective, that we get the spillout in Newark, in Patterson, in Camden. You give people bus tickets, not saying you per se, but that's what happens when you don't have programs or services. And even though you may not be able to specifically afford them, can't you afford to collaborate and partner with other townships that will or are starting to experience it? Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Number four, that's who I thought had their hand up forever. Yeah, that one.
I have had my hand up forever. Good evening. My name is Rachel Cooper, co-founder of the New Jersey Homelessness Action Collaborative, and also definitely a part of spreading it to probably over 100 folks that were either in attendance, in person, or on Zoom here tonight as part of this collaborative, as members of this collaborative, which is, consists of people who've experienced homelessness, whether current or previously, CEOs, executive directors, government, like county government executives. We have, it's a frontline workers, social workers. We have a slew of folks who have joined this collaboration, advisory board members from all over this entire state. I personally do not live in Haddonfield. I work in all 21 counties, however. And I want to remind commissioners, council members, that the role of municipal government is to serve its people, right? So true peace and good order doesn't come from citations and handcuffs. It comes from building a community where residents can actually afford to live or thrive, right? So you have a choice in Haddonfield tonight. You can pass an ordinance that drives people further into despair, right, and becoming invisible, even more so than they are now when you walk on by them. Or you can take a stand, show some dignity, some compassion, right, and use real common sense, right, by rejecting the criminalization of homelessness, and instead coordinate with those who are coordinating all over the place to build affordable housing, right, to create affordable housing. There are so many variations of affordable housing, and there are so many ways to be resolute about this at a local level, right, as part of a statewide collaborative, right, or even a tri-county collaborative. And in that case, you have the COC, the Continuum of Care, which, you know, your county is part of a four-county continuum. Camden, Cape May, Cumberland, and Gloucester are all part of one, coming up with solutions with federal funding. But if you want peace and good order, right, don't build jails. You know, if you, you cannot ticket away poverty, you cannot jail away homelessness, but you can solve it with housing, right? Housing and then the services come in, and the real crime, right, a real crime is a town where people can't afford to live, you know? So if you want to fix it, fix it together. Reach out to those who actually know how to fix it and who are doing it and changing the culture in many places. So you can be an example, for sure, because there's way less, way less towns who have criminalized homelessness than those that have found solutions. But, and I will say that some people gave a lot of numbers, a lot of good statistics. It really is like a fiscal crime to do this, right, on the taxpayer, because it's, it costs approximately, like someone said earlier, around 12,000, it was ranging from 12,000 to 16,000 per year per two-person household in a moderate one-bedroom to house that two-person household versus the 75,000 per inmate per year, or the 320,000 to throw them in Greystone. I think it was Rich Uniac who gave that number before. Those are real numbers. So, and you can look them up, verifiable. So that's all I got. But you could reach out. Again, New Jersey Homelessness Action Collaborative, we're a large group of us.
Thanks, Raquel.
No problem.
Good evening, commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. And I'd first like to thank everybody that has come out and spoken so eloquently. Yes, my name is Joseph Bouvier. I live in Merchantville.
Thank you.
And I first want to thank everybody who's come out and spoken tonight because they've done an excellent job presenting a lot of information to you all tonight. I want to point out homelessness is often due to conscious choices made by lawmakers. For over 40 years, our federal government has repeatedly reduced taxes on the wealthy and at times significantly cut spending on social welfare programs that would help prevent homelessness, even as the chasm between the haves and have-nots has gotten wider and wider and more disparate. We all see that the cost of housing has skyrocketed in recent years, and there's not enough affordable housing, and that's a problem that leads to a spike in homelessness. But plans for more and more box warehouses are approved by towns, catering to big business and the well-off. So I look at it as our priorities are really out of whack. They are frequently based on greed, and that's a problem. Until last year, the courts consistently held that criminalizing homelessness was wrong, was unconstitutional. But the current corrupt Supreme Court recently overturned decades of precedent by uphold, upholding a law very similar to that which Haddonfield looks to, has proposed for this meeting tonight. But we've, we've heard there are already laws on the books prohibiting disturbing the peace, rioting, creating unnecessary noise, things that are items that people have complained about tonight as the need for why we need such an ordinance. So criminalizing with possible jail time, sleeping overnight on seats or benches, or protractedly lounging on those seats or benches, whatever that means specifically, strikes me as inherently cruel and unnecessary because we've already got laws on the books to prohibit certain activities that are deemed criminal. And these, this proposed ordinance is particularly cruel, given the economically trying times that people are going through right now, that so many people are having difficulties with. Jailing people because they cannot afford housing is just unusually cruel. There have to be better solutions, focusing on prevention of homelessness rather than punishing homelessness. For instance, increasing the minimum wage, requiring developers to build higher percentages of affordable housing when doing construction projects, increasing the level of state disability benefits, increasing the level of social security benefits, passing Medicare for All, raising taxes on the wealthy, providing greater social services, preventing corporations from purchasing homes in order to sell and make a profit. These are all things that can be done that will reduce the risk of homelessness. We have to protect our vulnerable citizens. Criminalizing homelessness will simply put poor people in a much worse place, perhaps to the point where they can never recover from being homeless. They may not ever be able to overcome that. I have a question. I wonder, who presented this ordinance amendment to the Board of Commissioners? Is there an organization pushing this agenda to item to towns across our state or across the country? Is there any connection to the for-profit prison industry? Because jailing people is expensive. We've heard it's a lot more expensive than building and providing homes for people temporarily. And you know who pays for that expensive jailing system? Taxpayers do. Who profits from it? The for-profit prison industry. I leave it with, is jailing homeless people a good idea? Of course not. It's not. I ask that the commission do the research and withdraw this proposed amendment. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Joseph. And lastly, Sierra, you've been very patient.
Thank you all. Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for holding this space, and also thank you for those who were brave enough to uplift their voice tonight. My name is Sierra. I am a survivor advocate who supports domestic violence survivors across the entire state, including in the town of Haddon Township. I also visit Haddon Township because I live close nearby. I am here today to speak firmly against the criminalization of homelessness. Criminalizing people for being unhoused does not solve the problem, as we've heard tonight. It deepens it. Domestic violence is one of the leading causes of homelessness, particularly for women and children. One in four women and one in seven men in the United States will experience severe intimate partner violence in their lifetime. This means that every one of us knows someone who has been affected and impacted by domestic violence, whether we're aware of it or not. According to the National Network to End Domestic Violence, in just one night in New Jersey, people were seeking help. And in just one night, this includes Camden County and Haddon Township, there were 733 adults and children that found refuge in emergency shelters, transitional housing, hotels, motels, and other housing providers and local programs. But there were also 187 unmet requests for housing. And so we know that there is a lack of sufficient resources and funding, and we know that approximately 74% of unmet needs every night includes emergency shelter, hotels, motels, transitional housing, and other housing that those on the street need access to. Across our state, including in Haddon Township, there are simply not enough affordable, safe, and stable housing options for those fleeing abuse. Survivors don't choose to be victims, and they don't choose homelessness. No one, including survivors of domestic violence, should be criminalized for experiencing trauma or lack of being accessed, being able to access safe, stable housing. These are moments when people need support, not punishment. There are advocates like myself, working in communities and agencies across New Jersey and in Haddon Township, who are deeply committed to addressing this crisis. We are ready and willing to collaborate with policymakers, service providers, and community members to create real compassionate solutions. We need investment in housing, supportive services, and trauma-informed care. This is a critical and urgent issue, and we cannot arrest our way out of it. I urge you to reject this amendment and policies that criminalize homelessness, and instead work with us, those who are invested in the community, to support and protect our most vulnerable neighbors. So I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Sierra. Any other online visitors would like to make a comment? All right, seeing none, I will move to close the public comment period on the agenda.
Voting on that motion. Commissioner Cole?
In favor.
Commissioner Troy?
In favor.
Commissioner Seidel?
In favor. I'm going to go through the list of questions I heard. You can add to this as you like, both of you. And then, not every question gets answered tonight. I'll be really honest about that. You've asked us questions, you've asked us to think. To say that we already have an answer for you means we're closed-minded. So you're not going to get an answer to every question that was posed, but I'll go through the list. So Maureen, I'll list yours first. So what is different about this law? I'm going to list them all, and then we'll start to get to, there's, what are the stats? Who brought it forward? Why now? What's different about this in Collinswood? Did you get told to put this on an agenda? What's the process of the action of the law? Like, what happens? Walk us through, you know, day in a life. What's the list of public restrooms in Haddonfield and the surrounding areas? Talk about the timing and then the process of the law. So this is almost like, I'm just a bill, yes, I'm only a bill kind of question, like, how does this work? So they're the ones I heard. Anybody want to add to the list?
Those are great. Let's start there.
All right. Who brought it? The commissioners of Haddonfield. That's why it's on the agenda.
No, no.
Okay, well, we'll disagree about that.
I will honestly tell you, I promised you transparency during the campaign, and you voted for me. I'm telling you now, this was not me. In fact, I argued against this the entire time that this was being debated. So no, this is not the Barrow Commissioners. I want nothing to do with this.
All right, fair enough. Thank you. Did we get told to bring this? Well, all three of us want to answer this question. No. I was asked by the residents.
I can tell you from having observed the process in which this ordinance came to be, it is not rooted in research. From my personal opinion, from what I've observed, it is not rooted in data or stats. It is not rooted in any moral code. So what does that leave behind? Political ideology? I don't know. But I can tell you what it's not rooted in.
Stats. I guess I could go to the chief on this one. Can you give us some stats on homelessness in Haddonfield?
For anybody who doesn't know, my name is Jason Cutler. I'm the chief of police in Haddonfield. I've been in law enforcement. Thank you.
Jason, could you, yeah, you're going to use the mic.
Sorry, sorry. I thought it was loud enough. So I'm the chief of police in Haddonfield. I've been in Haddonfield for 31 years, 34 years in law enforcement total, seven years as chief of police. So I'll just go over some stats, and then I'll say some words that I, some of my opinions that I've seen. This year alone, year-to-date, as of last- Um, this year alone, uh, year to date, uh, as of last uh Friday, we answered a hundred and forty-eight calls for homeless individuals. Uh, check the well-being, trespassing, disorderly conduct. All those hundred and forty-eight calls had to do with somebody that was homeless. Okay? Out of that, a hundred and forty-eight, a hundred and three were from four individuals. Um, fifty-seven was the top, and then it went down from there. Uh, we we made arrests, some of those people, for trespassing. Uh, most of it's using uh public restrooms to bathe, uh, things like that, uh, defecating in public areas, uh, things like that. Those were uh, the biggest for trespassing businesses. Uh, you know, call us all the time saying, hey, there's somebody in. We ask them to leave, and they're not leaving. So then that's when we we show up. Uh, we we ask them to leave. If they don't want to leave, then we unfortunately, we have to go further. It is not our goal to incarcerate anybody, whether it be for homeless or anybody. I, you know, I wish there was no no crime at all, but you know, we live in the real world, and that's just not possible. But our goal, and my goal as chief of police, and my department's goal, is not to incarcerate homeless. Okay? This just gives us an avenue, another step, a tool in the toolbag, to get them to help. Our number one goal is to help. Uh, you know, I've been in law enforcement thirty-four years. Every time that me or my officers deal with a homeless person, our number one question is, how can I help you? How are you? What do you need? I personally watch officers take money out, give money to to homeless people. I've seen them go above me and beyond, drive them places, let them use their cell phones. This is not, you know, we're what ever, the biggest thing I heard tonight was compassion, and I agree with all of you. You know, when I, when I first became chief seven years ago, one of my my goals was, what what do I want the police department to be? You know, what do we stand for? Okay, so I I came up with three, three goals, three core values. Number one is service. Obviously, we're a police department. We're here to serve you. Number two, we serve with integrity. So integrity was my number, my second core goal. And my third one was compassion. It's on our coins. It's on our our website. Compassion has been my core value since I started law enforcement. That's one of the reasons why I got in. So I take offense some, and and I know that, you you know, this is a very passionate discussion, and I applaud everybody for coming, and I don't disagree with anybody. Uh, you you know, I I would love to see no homeless, but unfortunately, that's not gonna happen. Okay? We can build the best. I I heard that. Let's build the best. Hey, that's great. Let's pay for it. Let's find property. Let's do it. I'm all for it. But the experience that I've had, and I've talked to other chiefs in the area, because I know this is a hot topic. What is going on in your community? What are you doing differently? If if you have a homeless population that that's decreasing, what are you doing that we're not? Nobody could give me a great answer, except, hey, our homeless problem is is getting bigger as well. That that that's that's the problem that we have. Uh, we, every time we we ask, can I take you somewhere? Can I do anything for you? Most of the time, the answer is no. All right? And that's it. No, I don't need your help. I don't want your help, for whatever reason, whether it's, you you know, in law enforcement. I've I've dealt with three types of homeless people, and I'm gonna generalize. One, the person that that has come on hard luck. They've they've lost their job, uh, divorce. Uh, I heard domestic violence from Sierra. She's she's correct. That happens. Those are more normally the people that take the help. Then you have substance abuse, people that are addicted, people that have fallen on their, you know, bad times because they got an accident, got addicted to pills, and that led to to other problems. That's two. And the third is mental illness, which is probably our biggest here in Haddonfield. Anytime, you you know, for the past year, we have between four and six regular homeless people, I would say. And and I hate to classify as regular homeless people, but there are four to six people that we deal with on a on a basis more often than not. When I first started, there was one to two. So there has been an increase, you know, over the years. Just last year, we only had eighty-eight calls for the entire year uh for twenty twenty-four of homeless people. So you can see it's getting different, or getting getting more, and it's becoming more of a problem. You know, when when asked, you know, who brought this to the attention, the 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 commissioner was right, as in, I get calls every day. You know, I have the responsibility of of safety for not only the homeless people, the residents, the visitors, the schoolchildren. I'm responsible for everybody, my me and my department. And I can't ignore those voices either. There were a lot of voices here tonight against, and I I applaud you guys. But there's a lot of voices that I get every day. What are you doing about the homeless? This person's, you know, peeing in my fountain. This person's doing this. This person's doing that. What are you doing about that? So I brought, if anyone, if you want to blame somebody, blame me or blame the residents. You know, I brought this to the attention to the commissioners. Whatever happens after that, that's for them to decide. But this, this is a problem that my police department is having. I need help to solve it. All right, this was just one way. The goal of this, and this is my goal, i- is not to incarcerate anybody. It's just to to move people to get help, and that's our number one goal. I'm sorry it took a lot of time. You know, if you want me to keep.
No, no, I'm gonna ask you a couple of questions, so.
I'm I'm happy to answer anything more.
There are, this is day two hundred and thirty-seven of the year, and you said we've had over a hundred and forty-eight calls. All right, so that's a little, that is more than one a day, not quite two a day. Is homelessness a crime in Haddonfield?
Yeah, no, being homeless is not.
Okay.
Urination and dedication, there is no state law except the LUDIS. Like, you know, this ordinance is, an ordinance is less. Doesn't, when you get convicted of an ordinance, it doesn't go under your permanent record. If you, you ever go to the FBI, they 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 don't know that you're, you've been arrested for
New Jersey now, you'll get a ticket. And that's what will happen for any ordinance violation. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, you'll just get a summons like a speeding ticket or parking ticket and say, hey, come to court. We allege that you did this. Talk to the judge. If he finds you guilty, there's a fine or not. So what happens is when we give you the ticket, there's a court date. If you don't show up for a court date, what do they do? They send you a reminder, say, hey, you didn't show up for court. After the second time, you didn't show up for court. What do they do? They send you another reminder. You have to get three or four reminders before they actually issue a warrant for your arrest. So once they issue a warrant for your arrest, it goes in the system. And anytime a police officer runs your name for whatever reason, whether it be running your tag, you know, we get a call because you're playing the music too loud. We put your name in a database and it pops up a warrant. And that's what a warrant served us.
Sure. And it doesn't matter what town issued that warrant?
No, it doesn't matter what town. It's anywhere in the state. And there are, you know, US war, you know, there's if you get stopped in Hawaii and they issue a warrant for your arrest and they put it into a special system, we could arrest you for something.
Collingswood came up specifically. There's a, there's a big difference. So like, what's different? Not with the law, but there's a difference. The difference in Collingswood is the property owner of a business would own not only their business, but all the space all the way to the curb. So they own their sidewalk, the business in front of it. In Haddonfield, the property line ends at the front of your building and the sidewalk is public property. As Andrew had mentioned, there's days he's not allowed to put his chairs out because it's our property. And you have to get a permit to put out your chairs. There are days we say you can't put out your chairs because we have events. There are other days because it's raining and we say, please don't put it out because people are bustling with their umbrellas and all. But in Collingswood, they own their sidewalks, merchants. And you found that there is an increase in trespass tickets or whatever?
Yeah.
That they have with homeless?
So Collins, I don't want to call out any other town, but this is how they dealt with their homeless issue is they charged them. They had the business owners keep charging an individual with, with being on their property. And eventually it led to warrants. They had no caveat. There was no, we want to help you first. There was no, you know, we have to offer you shelter, kind of like our ordinance is trying to do is trying, we're trying to gear you towards help. They were trying to gear you towards jail, I guess. But in New Jersey, it's very hard to get jailed for a borough ordinance violation.
Chief, just a correction on that. They do offer the help and assistance before that. It's when the businesses and the businesses were providing food and shelter for them. And at a certain point, some of the businesses got fed up with it and then they would issue the trash passing when they found unpleasant things on their property.
I stand corrected. Yep, I stand corrected.
All right. No, so thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for the chief?
Thanks, chief. Are you, can you speak to us about the kind of training the police officers who report to you receive on trauma-informed care or dealing with those with mental health challenges?
We receive ongoing training on, on everything, especially that we, there's something called New Jersey Learn that we are required to do so many continuing education credits, for lack of better terms, through the Attorney General's Office. There were two modules on that issue about two years ago. So every officer gets trained initially in the initial training in the police department. And then there's ongoing training, whatever the Attorney General decides, hey, this year we're going to deal with X, Y, Z. Next year, we're going to do with A, B, C. So it's all that.
Did I understand that correctly? You said two modules, two years ago?
Yes.
I understand. I lost my train of thought. But do you feel that that level of training is sufficient to address mental health challenges?
We, the police department, that's kind of loaded question. We are not mental health care providers. You know, we have, you know, just like we have Borough EMTs, they're highly trained in emergency medicine, things like that, paramedics. We're cursory trained in, in everything. We have to be the jack of all trades. What we, what we're trained to do is basically assess a situation for immediate danger. Is there an immediate danger to this person? What, what immediate help can we get them? And then refer them to, to properly trained individuals or not properly trained, better that have better training. So we can assess or triage the situation and then get them the care that they need. Once they're in that care level, then it's, you know, it's, it's up for them to either, you know, accept the help or not. But we can, we can lead the horse to the water, but we can't make them drink.
I'm good.
Frank, any? All right, one more question. No, John.
You?
No, no, that's okay. I'm going to ask a.
Ask me.
I'll ask you a question. Have you ever drawn your gun?
Have I ever drawn my gun? Twice.
Okay.
It's a tool that I've never, twice and pointed at somebody, you know, so.
That's what I meant.
Yeah, it's, it's a tool that I have. I hope to never use it. And this is kind of what maybe you're getting at is this ordinance is a tool in my toolbox that I hope will never have to use. My goal, like I first stated, is not to write a summons to anybody for being homeless. I agree that's, but it gives the police department or the avenue to say, hey, you don't want my help, but we're going to make you take the help because you're not helping yourself. You know, I've spoken to the municipal court judge, you know, I've known him for 30 years. He doesn't want to incarcerate anybody for, for this either. But they, the court can mandate, hey, you know, you need, you know, a psychological evaluation because most of the people that we deal, the homeless individuals that we deal in town have some degree of mental illness. It's not the family that lost the, you know, the parents lost their job and they're living in a car, things like that. That's a horrible situation. All these situations are horrible. But, you know, the mental illness, they can't help themselves. The people that lost their job, you know, at least they have the wherewithal to say, hey, this is what I need to do. This is the help I need. This is what I can do. This is the path to get out. I think, I think Sierra was, was one that said that. The, you know, the, the people with mental disabilities, they don't know they have problems sometimes. They don't know the right path to go to. And this is what, as a police department, this is how I want to steer them to get them the help that they need.
Would you ever turn down coordinated help?
No.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any more questions. No, I did not. I said it was not quite two a day. It is more than one a day.
More than one, less than two.
More than one, less than two. No, we're at day two thirty-seven and we have one hundred and forty-eight. And if you double that, that's.
Calls, the individuals we're discussing are four to six people. To me, that's actually important data point. There could be a thousand calls, but we're dealing with four to six people.
Okay. Did I answer your question? No, two thirty-seven, one forty-eight times two is two hundred and ninety-six. And that's bigger than two thirty-seven. Yeah, I think you're getting stuck on a number. It is more than one a call, one call. It's, no. Yeah, you're right. No, you're right. You're right. It's one every two days. It's less than one every two days. Yes, there you go. There you go. So you did misspeak. Thank you. All right. So one, right. So, okay. Yeah, all right. It's also eleven oh five, right? So, okay. Any other, any other questions that you want to have answered? Timing and process of the law? The, the process of the law. Tonight is introduction of an ordinance. What is that? That is the majority opinion of the Borough of Haddonfield's commissioners as a idea to address a problem. It's what it is. When you elect people, you elect them to present ideas. And it's, and I say this to my staff, I've said this to my children, I say this to nearly anybody because I talk to just about everyone. If you ask somebody for an idea, you get very few. And when you ask people for their opinion, you get a lot. And we're putting out an idea that we need opinions. So we've done our part and now we're, now you're doing your part. That's the first reading. Some, and then we have until the end of our legislative year in December to take in the feedback that you're getting, to then decide if we want to have a hearing to make it the ordinance. And that's the process that we go through. I am very heartened tonight and I'm not going to make a statement yet. That's how it's supposed to work. But the conversation starts now. It doesn't start three months ago. It started three months ago as a problem presented to the commissioners and we've had to work to come up with an idea to address it. Now we've presented it to the public. At a minimum, it's 30 days, right, Sal? Yeah, at a minimum, it's 30 days. And we have until December 31st to actually take any action on it or not. So that's the process. The timing, not sure. We haven't even talked about it yet. You know, you've talked about it to us. We haven't talked about it with each other to see if we want to edit it, if we want to do anything, even if we wanted to vote on it tonight. We haven't even done that yet. The process of the law, I think you've kind of covered that, like what you do with it. And I don't think the other question's why now? Ah, the hell it is, it's not getting late. So I give you, do you have a why now answer?
So the, the why now is the, the problem is not getting any better. And if you look at the stats around the, you know, the, the country, the U.S., in 2020, you had about 580,000 people, homeless people in a, in a single night. By 2024, that rose to 771,000. And, you know, I'll, I'll guess I'll maybe declare a speech here because it'll be more than two minutes. But when you talk about like, you know, how come they're not consulting with the experts? And if you look at the trend in Camden County, it's about the same. Camden County is going up and, you know, basically where it used to trend around five to 600, now it's up to 650. Again, at the end of 2024. So if you say, you know, why are you working this now? Why wait? People aren't getting healthier if they live on the street every day. We just had someone die here two weeks ago. Herb knew him. So what, what is the benefit in waiting? And if you, if you think about this, is this perfect? Like, not at all. But like, you have to have a starting point for something. You have to have the, the, the starting point to, to maybe change a different direction. And, you know, I used to have a boss that said this, that, you know, if you, if you always do what you've always done, you always get what you've always gotten. So if you say, yeah, we should consult with the experts, spend time, slow down the process, consult with the experts, what are the experts getting us? Homelessness is going up. And, and so, so, so the starting point is, so the starting point is, you had your chance to speak, ladies and gentlemen.
Frank, Frank, Frank. It's okay.
So the, the reason for it is to, to start the process now, to start as soon as possible to save as many people as possible. Because there are more and more people at risk every single day, so there's no reason to delay.
Wait, may I have a turn? First of all.
Well, I was going to wait. I was giving you the turn next.
Thank you, David. Thank you. Well, now you know what I've been working on. I want to first acknowledge, first of all, a thank you to all of you and everyone who came and left. I truly appreciate it. No matter what your argument was, I think this is the best of democracy. And again, I promised you transparency and I wanted to let you know when this was being introduced so you can come in, voice your opinion, whatever it is. I think having heard everybody today, I think we're all in agreement. I think we're all saying very similar things. Homelessness is a problem. I agree. They agree. The true debate where we disagree is how we want to solve it. Now, where we're also maybe disagreeing is how much we want to sensationalize it, the scale of the problem, how much fear mongering we want to use. I think we disagree on that, too. But truly, we agree that homelessness is a problem we want to solve. Right? Generally, I've heard two approaches. Approach one, send the police. Let the police deal with this. And this ordinance essentially will make sleeping outside a municipal level crime, which means our police will have to deal with it. But if you ask anyone who has done any research on this or studied it, that, that does not work. You end up, even if you give a citation to the person, they can't pay it. Maybe they never go to jail. I mean, that's, that's the end game, right? They're going to go to jail because they're not going to be able to pay this fine. So three, four, five times, however much. And so I don't see how that, and then they're in jail, right? They come out, where'd they go? Jail is not stable housing. So they're going to end up back right on the street. We haven't solved anything. And we pay the county for that. Sorry, I'm, I've jotted notes as we, as everyone was talking, so. On the other hand, the other approach is a tried and proven approach. By the way, the criminalization has been what we've been doing for decades and doesn't work. The other tried and proven approach is meet people in their moment of need. Don't send a police officer with a gun. Send a social worker. Send a specialist who actually is trained in this and can meet that person, build a relationship, build trust, earn that relationship and eventually lead them to stable housing with the wraparound services that will keep them stably housed. Right? That's another approach. So we've, we've been debating, how do we want to go at solving this problem? Do we want to send our police in who get two modules every two years on training on this? Or do we send specially trained mental health specialists, maybe in partnership with the police, so that it is actually dealt with in an effective way? I think if we go about it this way, people are going to end up in a position that is worse than, than anything else. Now, I cannot speak to the effort that my colleagues put in. I can speak only to my own effort. But I've only been in this role for three months. And upon this topic coming up, I went to work. I reached out to the county social services team. I reached out to the state social services team. I reached out to neighboring municipalities to talk about this and whether or not we can do any direct service program. I spoke to our faith leaders. In fact, I spoke to a representative from the Council of Churches. I also spoke to nonprofits. I set in on workshops. I, I put in a lot of hours to this. I feel quite well informed on what will work and what will not work. A social worker that is a town resource would be an incredible way to solve this. And it would be Haddonfield being a leader. And we don't even have to hire the person. Our Council of Churches have offered, and they pooled the money themselves, have offered to hire. We would just have to support them and maybe help subsidize and help find an office space for that person downtown. Let them build a relationship, keep track of the folks who, who we need to find housing for. Why haven't, and the question was, why now? Yeah, why did you guys wait? Collectively, you two have been in office for, what, five years? I've been in this role three months and I found these.
Five months more than you would do.
Okay, four years.
Just pointing it out. I had public works.
I.
No, and.
I have public works.
No, we're not going to turn this into that. I'm going to ask a question. All right. Do you have a statement you would like to read before we?
I mean, all of this is selective enforcement. It's going to be a huge problem. You're leaving interpreting this ordinance to the police officer who is responding to the situation. Selective enforcement means discrimination. That is a lawsuit. Now, this town has a terrible habit of accumulating lawsuits. We just settled a couple of million dollar lawsuit. I don't want us back there. And it's going to happen. And refusing housing, yes, people will refuse housing because the person who's responding is a police officer. And we're admitting that that's what we've been doing this whole time and our solution is we're going to keep doing it more. How does that make sense? So no, I don't think sending a police officer will work. And yes, I think they will refuse help because that is not how you build trust and relationship. And as, and when it comes to children, I have two kids, three and six. I made a commitment to myself as a mother, I will never lie to them and I will prepare them for the world. And when we come across a difficult situation, I'm not, it is not my job as their mother to hide them from discomfort and the realities of the world. I use that opportunity to have a very honest conversation of those realities that we have to observe. And they get to choose the kind of person they want to be with that information. As for public restrooms, as again, a mother to a three and a six-year-old, I'm actively potty training. Yes, a public restroom would be lovely. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Frank, you have, you have anything you want to add before we kind of close this? Thank you.
Uh, nothing to add.
All right. There are lots of ways to look at this problem. One way is things that work and things that don't. I think of it differently. Things that should and things that must. And, and I'll explain that right now. So tonight, we're starting the discussion about this amendment. I want to be clear. An ordinance is always the last resort. It is the boundary of what will happen. Not what is bound to happen. It is the last resort. This is what will happen. That's what an ordinance is. And our goal, as you've heard from comment, from our chief, is not to punish people who are struggling. But our goal is to keep, my goal, I'll speak in I statements. My goal is to keep our public spaces safe and accessible for everyone. Homelessness isn't a crime. Thanks, everyone, for your public comments. Every idea I heard was a good one. Like arrows in a quiver. For those who know me, I talk about arrows and quivers all the time. The more options our public safety officers have to engage with someone in crisis, the better. Right now, sadly, we have very few services available. That's why I want to stress, any and all ideas to support people in need are welcome. I asked the chief, would you turn it down? No. Whether or not, whether it's our local council churches, which I didn't speak to a representative, I spoke to one of them, right? Thank you, Neil, for your time. Specialized county programs, we've, I heard so many, I'm glad you wrote them down. And even private nonprofits that want to step in and be part of our solution, we encourage a partnership. Come on. Our preference is always to connect individuals with help, not to enforce penalties. Homelessness is not a crime. However, crimes of desperation like shoplifting, breaking into unoccupied buildings, garages, trespassing on private property, like backyards to use a hose, to use a pool to clean yourself and your clothing, that's trespassing. That needs to be enforced. I, I'm not going to ask if everyone agrees on that. I believe those types of activities need to be enforced because they infringe on the rights of someone else, the property of someone else, the safety of someone else. There are quality of life issues that we have and we will continue to give it all the attention necessary. Well, but this amendment also does something very important. And I'm going to point it out because you asked what's, what's different about this? It aligns penalties with reality of the behavior. So currently, as chief said, certain acts like bodily acts in public can only be prosecuted under laws as severe as felony lewdness. Or do it in front of a kid. Megan's Law. That's a little drastic, sounds to me, and it's not appropriate punishment. By moving those specific actions into a disorderly conduct category, we're softening the penalty and making it sure that it reflects the circumstances fairly. This is one of the many compromises that we have to make as we address our own positions on this and, and broadly on actually any issue. We have to come to a compromise and then speak as a voice at the top of the agenda. It is the agenda of the Board of Commissioners. And so the question, why now? I'm going to answer my why now. I only speak for myself here. Recent decisions by PACO, I had a conversation out of the blue, the guy got my number. John Hanson, right, the CEO of the Delaware River Authority called me and he explained to me about they're shutting their system down from Sunday night to Friday morning, starting September 1st. Why now for me? I ride to PACO all the time, all hours of the night and the day. I work in Philadelphia. I take it all the time. There are many unhoused that choose the safety of the public transportation system. It's cool in the summer, it's warm in the winter. You're not alone because there are riders there all the time. They're shutting that down. They're taking away actually a safe space by shutting down the trains. At midnight, that train rolls into the last station. You're told to get off the train and told to leave the station and the door is locked behind you. That is their plan. I would much rather, as a homeless person, and I won't get into my personal background, but for those that know me, I'll just leave it at that. I'd much rather get off three stops, four stops before Lindenwald at 10 of 12 because Haddonfield is a safer place to be homeless than it is in our neighboring communities. So that's the why now. The why now is the actions of PACO, they've, they've pushed, and the current practices of some of our neighboring towns, like I asked the chief, they've pushed more challenges into our community. And in my view, it's increased the urgency for us to have this conversation now, when we're having it. I think it's already successful. We've started a conversation that's long overdue, but it's not just words. Those have to be followed up with actions. And here's the problem. In the absence of actions, we have to have a law. That's my view. We can't simply look the other way. We are addressing this, I believe, thoughtfully, responsibly, and with compassion. The three pillars of, of the slogans of the police department. So this ordinance, to me, is about balance. It's about keeping our downtown welcoming and safe, giving our officers more appropriate tools, encouraging the community to also provide ideas, services, answers, so it never gets to the police. So step forward because enforcement of homelessness is a community effort, not an effort of the Haddonfield Police Department. Thanks. I was remiss before we move forward. I, I want to read something into the record on it. Oh, actually, I'll do it in a minute because we'll move to the hearing.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so that's a good point. It's a better way to do it. So that's the public comment period is closed and we're moving on to the agenda portion. If anybody just wants to sit through our ordinances, I'm sure it is not the first thing on our ordinances. We got a couple hearings to go. So I'm going to move to the ordinance section. Ordinance 2025-08. This is the long-term tax exemption ordinance for Bancroft. It's the second reading, public hearing and adoption vote. Can I get a, I'm making the motion to, to have the discussion and the hearing. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Voting on that motion. Commissioner Cole?
In favor.
Commissioner Troy?
In favor.
Commissioner Seidel?
In favor.
Public hearing's open.
The public hearing is open. If anyone from the public would like to speak on the adoption of our long-term exemption ordinance for Bancroft, affectionately known as the pilot, please come forward. Seeing none, I moved online. Is there anyone online that would like to make comment about the Bancroft pilot second reading and adoption? Seeing none. I'm going to ask for a vote to close the public hearing and adopt the long-term exemption ordinance 2025-08 on second reading.
Motion to close and adopt 2025-08 on second reading.
I'll second.
Voting on that motion. Commissioner Troy?
In favor.
Sorry. Commissioner Cole?
In favor.
And Commissioner Seidel?
In favor. The second, second reading, the second public hearing on an ordinance at second reading is 2025-09, amend chapter.
is 2025-09, amend chapter 135 entitled Land Use for Wireless Telecommunications. On second reading, I will make the motion to open the hearing, will open the hearing and invite the public to make comment if they would like. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Voting on that motion. Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Cole?
Wait, hold on. We're voting on?
Opening it up for comment.
Oh, opening up for comment, yes, in favor.
Commissioner Troy?
In favor.
Commissioner Seidel?
In favor. The hearing is open. Would anyone like to come and address the commissioners on the wireless telecommunications land use ordinance hearing? We did have one, one, one citizen come and talk to us at the open public comment period. Would you like another turn at it? No. All right. So I'm going to read David's first and then you can do it, John. So this is a letter from David Desgalowski. Des.
Zengaus.
Des Zengauski, thank you very much. Center Street, Haddonfield. He is one of the two gentlemen. John being the other one who will introduce himself, that gave us a lot of effort into adopting a better ordinance. And I will point out, after I read this, we'll close it, then I'll make a comment. Opposition to the wireless telecommunication ordinance on second reading. Dear Board of Commissioners, while we appreciate the opportunity to review and comment on this draft ordinance in April and May of this year, and again this summer on first and second reading, I remain concerned about the level of communication surrounding this draft ordinance and the timing of its official readings. Scheduling the second reading in late August, while so many of Haddonfield's residents are away for the last moments of together time before school and sports and activities resume, seem curious at best and strategic at worst. In any event, I believe this draft ordinance is deeply flawed proposal for reasons I address briefly below. I originally tried offering comments and proposed revisions to the ordinance some three months ago. I noted in an email to the borough administrator Sharon McCullough that New Jersey towns far bigger than ours are not incorporating Byzantine telecommunications ordinance like this one into their codes. To that end, comparisons are helpful. Our historic borough is 2.8 square miles and approximately 12,500 residents. Yet we are introducing into our code this sprawling ordinance that clocks in at 28 pages. By contrast, Mount Laurel is 22 square miles with over 74,000 people and its telecommunication ordinance is eight pages long. Freehold Township is 22 square miles with 45,000 people and its ordinance is seven pages long. I would like to think that the length of Haddonfield's proposal ordinance is proportional to the level of detail and care required to preserve our borough's look and feel, its historic landmarks, and its property values. Unfortunately, I fear that is not the case with this ordinance. Rather than clearly and strictly limit the height of towers like Cherry Hill does in its ordinance, they have a cap at 35 feet in residential zones. Haddonfield's ordinance states vaguely that height should be kept at a minimum. Rather than prohibit new lattice or guide towers in our borough like Mount Laurel's telecommunication ordinance does, Haddonfield's ordinance allows any type of tower to be built here. Any. We proposed several years ago that the borough adopt an ordinance to wrest control of the siting and development process from the telecommunication companies. This ordinance, however, seems to greenlight any and all pathways to towers, including monopolies, guide towers and lattice towers, oh, monopoles, sorry, not monopolies, guide towers and lattice towers, and multiple ones at that, in our historic borough. The first stated purpose of the ordinance is to accommodate the growing need and demand for personal wireless service. The second stated purpose of the ordinance is to enhance the ability of the providers to personal wireless services to provide such services. In fact, one needs to keep reading until purpose number five. I repeat, purpose number five, until we get to any stated purpose about protecting the character and attractiveness of the borough. Why are we subordinating the interest of the borough to the interests of the telecommunication companies in our very own ordinance? Haddonfield certainly did not take that tack when it successfully lobbied for the only below-ground PACO station on the New Jersey side of the high-speed line. Why should we take such attack now? The board should not adopt a pass now and amend later approach to this flawed ordinance. We should get it right the first time. If I were not out of state for family vacation, I would stand and deliver these remarks in person at Borough Hall. In order to be heard, I submitted this letter instead. I ask this letter to be read at the meeting so that it forms part of the official record. Thank you, David. John?
Very briefly, given the lateness of the hour. This, as Dave said in his letter, this is still a very flawed ordinance. But time and experience will show us what is material and what is merely hypothetical. But now that we have an ordinance in place, assuming the commissioners are in favor of it tonight, it's time for regular order. We need to get away from the Wild West approach of the last two failed monopole proposals. We have an ordinance which subordinates the monopole approach to the seventh favorable choice. And that's just not done on whim. That was done on the result of the survey process conducted by Cityscape that says the citizens' community do not want large cellphone towers in our community. They want the other approaches, the other technologies that are available. So now that we're going to have the ordinance in place, let's let the ordinance do its job. Let's try to regulate the, the construction of wireless facilities in the town instead of erecting large monopoles. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any comment from the commissioners?
No.
I believe the master plan and the ordinance does just that. And I'd be all in favor of seeing what's out there and what comes back when the ordinance is adopted and then we start to get proposals based off of what our described need was, described by Cityscape, commented on by the planning board, and accepted. I want to personally thank David and John for their work to make this a better proposal. For those that might not understand, it's not the best proposal. But we have some of the worst cell service. And so this is where one right doesn't outweigh the rest of the rights that we have to balance. I'm not going to point or reflect to other ones other than to say Haddonfield's process was, we wanted to submit one. We had a lot of comment when it was put out for first reading. We took it back. It made substantial enough changes to have to reintroduce it as a first reading. We then sat, we got more comment. Not comment that would change my mind because we could talk things to death and our cell service only gets worse. And that's my opinion. Thank you. So I'm not, I will vote in a moment, but that's how I feel about it. Any other comments from the public? Herb? Three minutes.
Herb Hess, Redmond Avenue. Be about 15 seconds.
All right, fair enough.
I know John's the expert. If there's any money to be made by the borough from the installation of the big, huge tower or some other solution, maybe part of it could be devoted to putting some public restrooms or lavatories downtown.
Thanks for the opinion. Thanks for the opinion, Herb.
Not just an opinion. We've heard tonight, it's needed.
Thank you. Any other comment from the public?
Yes, John Goresino, 325 Rowleywood.
Three minutes.
No worries. You got it, it'll be under three. There are alternatives out there. And there's one real close by that doesn't require a 180-foot pole. And it's also a town that's listed as Tree City. It's New York City. They're doing it now. Check it out. There's many, many different smaller poles around that city. They were able to get around the unique situation and their cell limited services by using this solution. So check it out. Pole is just quick, dirty, easy. New York's doing it. They're a tree city. Again, there's more than one solution than throwing up a 180-foot pole. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other in public? Moving on online, anyone like to make comment about the telecommunication wireless amendments to chapter 135? Seeing none. I move to close public comment on 2025-09 and move to vote on acceptance. I'll get a second. Thank you.
Voting on that motion. Commissioner Cole?
Opposed.
Okay. Commissioner Troy?
In favor.
Commissioner Seidel?
In favor. Next, ordinance 2025-10, second reading and public hearing for the adoption of reappropriation of $325,499.52, the proceeds of obligations not needed for the original purpose in order to provide for the acquisition of self-contained breathing apparatus sets from bond ordinance. This is the second reading and public hearing. I move to open the public hearing on this ordinance.
Second.
Voting on that motion. Commissioner Cole?
In favor.
Commissioner Troy?
In favor.
Commissioner Seidel?
In favor. Floor is open for comment. Seeing none in the room, I moved to online. Anyone like to comment on 2025-10, the reappropriation of $325,499.52 to change its original purpose to buying self-contained breathing apparatus for the firefighters? Seeing none. I move to close the public hearing and proceed to vote on 2025-10. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Voting on that motion. Commissioner Cole?
In favor.
Commissioner Troy?
In favor. Oh, I'm sorry.
Troy?
Favor, yeah.
Commissioner Seidel?
In favor. I jumped the gun. Next up, first reading, 2025-11, amend chapter 158 entitled Peace and Good Order in the first reading. Can I, making the motion, can I get a second?
What exactly is our motion here?
Our motion is to introduce, to introduce the ordinance, amendments. So I'll say it one more time for the record. So it's, so I make a motion to introduce 2025-11, amending chapter 158 in total, peace and good order, in its first reading. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Voting on that motion.
Well, before that, from a public hearing date purpose, the only thing we can actually talk about is by December 31st, we have to have a hearing or it dies at the table, if it's approved right now.
Die as a result of a legislative year coming to a close.
Yeah, can you explain that process a little bit more?
So the borough?
Sorry, Sharon.
It's got to be advertised, so you will have a public hearing.
Oh, sure.
But just, but just in terms of the legislative, it's a calendar year for any sort of legislation and ordinance requires an introduction, first reading as well as the second reading. If no action is taken by the end of the calendar year, of course, prior to that time would be publication, second reading, additional public hearing, it simply expires.
Sure.
So you would have the public hearing. If you don't make a motion to adopt or you make a motion to table, it then stops.
Right, it just stops.
Until you take it off the table or if you don't have a vote to move it forward.
And we could table it until the end of the year and then, then we would have to reintroduce it all. So that, that's the way the process works. From a, an accusation of skullduggery, this is the introduction, the beginning of this process. It is now, if, if voted affirmatively, it is now opening the conversation. And then we will have, just like you witnessed, but, you know, hearing that is another opportunity to that in between now and then. There will be other public opportunities to give us feedback on it, to give written, in person. I wouldn't recommend social media because we don't necessarily see that because it's not directed to us. It's directed to a social media person's audience. So you can write to the commissioners, you can attend a hearing in person, you can call us. But don't, we don't, it's not guaranteed we're going to see something just because you post it. So I am making the motion to approve on first reading the introduction of 2025-11. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Voting on that motion. Commissioner Cole?
Opposed.
Commissioner Troy?
In favor.
Commissioner Seidel?
I'm in favor. Moving to resolutions under the consent agenda. Resolutions have been placed in the consent agenda by the Board of Commissioners and are enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless requested by one of the commissioners. Number 117, authorization to pay vouchers. 118, authorization to insert special item of revenue, fiscal 2025 local recreation improvement grant. 119, authorization to renew membership in the Camden County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund. Number 120, authorization to approve various appointments to our boards. 121, authorization to approve appointments to the fire department active membership. Number 122, authorization to approve outdoor marketing graphic display permit application for 25 Kings Highway East. That was a long one. 123, authorization to sign shared services agreement with the Haddonfield Board of Education for the municipal alliance coordinator services. 124, authorization to sign a renewal of lease agreement with Virtua Health, Inc. 125, authorization to award the bid for tree and stump removal services. 126, authorization to award the bid of tree stock and stump removal services. And 127, the authorization to award the bid for stump removal services. I know that sounds funny. Can I get a motion to approve items 1713 to 127?
Motion to approve resolutions 117 through 127.
I second.
Anyone would like to discuss any of these items?
Nope, pretty, pretty standard stuff.
I get a kick out of tree stalk, stalk stump, and just stump. Some trees fall, some trees are cut, some trees, just the stump's still sitting there. I don't know about that, Herb.
Voting on that motion. Commissioner Cole?
In favor.
Commissioner Troy?
In favor. Did it again.
He's getting late.
Yeah, it is. In favor. In the resolution section, resolutions, we, number 128, the authorization to advertise for request for proposal for general banking services. Our current bank, Fulton Bank, has been our banker for quite a while. We're just seeing what's out there. We're not unhappy, we just want to, a good fiscal governance is to see what's out there. So I, I will make the motion to advertise the request for proposal for general banking services since I'm the commissioner of revenue and finance.
I'll second.
Voting on that motion. Commissioner Cole?
In favor.
Commissioner Troy?
In favor.
Commissioner Seidel?
In favor. Next, I open the floor to public comment on non-agenda items. You can bring anything you need or want to the dais, to the lectern and address the dais. Can I get a motion to open to the public for non-agenda items?
Motion to open to non-agenda items.
Thank you.
Voting on that motion. Commissioner Cole?
In favor.
Commissioner Troy?
In favor.
Commissioner Seidel?
In favor. Comment period is open. Floor is yours.
Kathy McGeehan again, from Windsor Avenue in Haddonfield. And I'm here now with a different hat. I'm representing Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America, South Jersey local group, and I'm one of the co-leads. August 25th to 29th marks Be Smart Week. As students go back to school, Smart Week reminds adults that they have homework to do, too. We educate public about securing, securely storing guns. We take real steps toward making our homes, schools, and neighborhoods and communities safer for everyone. Be Smart builds on the foundation of foundation of Be Smart for Children for Kids program, which is public education that's been around for 10 years, and it has a lot of impact as far as saving lives. We do presentations and people who have guns are encouraged to store them securely. People that don't have guns are encouraged to spread the word. And advocates, community partners, law enforcement, school boards, gun owners, non-gun owners want to protect kids. And we've all heard the stories from different large cities where people aren't securing their guns and children are getting a hold of them. 4.6 million children live in homes in the United States with unsecured guns. We're trying to tell people to tell anyone that they know that they should try to secure their guns. We want to ask the commissioners to help us make the community safe. And what you can do is share the information. I'm going to give you brochures. If you can put something on your website, that would be appreciated. This is something that we feel strongly about, and that's why we've been doing it for so long. So appreciate your attention and I'll hand these out now.
The easiest two questions to ask your friends' parents. Do you have a gun and is it secured?
Well, that's amazing for some people.
It should be. Right. It's to non, it's to take away the stigma of those two questions. Thank you.
Do I need to state my name again? Okay, Matthew Audubon. This will be a lot less volatile than the last one I said, which I, I'm going to move on from that. The point I wanted to bring up was, we like to talk about how walkable a city, or a borough, I apologize, Haddonfield is, but having spent a lot of time with a close friend of mine who is wheelchair-bound, I can tell you that it is not a walkable city for everyone. Along Kings Highway alone, there are, there are no curb cuts and there are some curbs that are up five, six inches. I think that, you know, that that's something that could be made a little bit more accessible, even if just on one side of the street and at intersections. I think that that could be something to look into if, you know, you guys could find the time for that.
No, you're absolutely right. Thanks for the comment.
Thank you very much.
Sharon, could you give a status update on the Kings Highway and Washington Avenue cross path of PECUP?
Yes, so I was just with the engineers that are designing that last week, I believe. They are about halfway through their design. It is to make all of the crosswalks from PATCO to Kings Highway handicap accessible, including the one at PATCO, the intersection of Washington and PATCO.
Really tall curb.
Yeah. And additional, additionally, it is changing the traffic lights to have the pedestrian, the updated pedestrian signaling and addressing, we are currently looking for the pattern to bring to the commissioners and to HPC, but also starting to address some of the sidewalk issues throughout the whole downtown. That's phase one. And then phase two would be finishing that and addressing some of the other areas.
Did you say pattern, do you mean crosswalk pattern?
No, the sidewalk itself.
Thank you. Yes, no, we've been chipping away at it, so to speak. The last crosswalk work right by the high school, next one is PATCO, and then from there, it's.
And Lee Avenue.
Right.
Lee Avenue will be worked on after they finish the curbing at Evergreen.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yep. Thank you for the comment. It's never any process. Herb?
Herb Hess, West Radman Avenue, before the night turns to the next day. Thank you for the transparency and the openness of this meeting. I got a little discouraged with the last commission. When I say the last commission, the last set of elected officials, some of whom seemed to want to not answer questions or shut down discussions. So even though I'm not in agreement with all of your positions, I do appreciate the work that you're putting in, and I just want to say that.
Thanks, Herb.
Thanks, Herb.
Seeing no more in person, I moved online. Anyone like to make a comment on anything? Is, is yearly, is that, is she trying to raise her hand or just? Oh, just a thumbs up. Okay. All right.
Do you have access to the?
Counting seven seconds. All right. See no one who would like to speak? I move to close public comment on non-agenda items. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Voting on that motion, Commissioner Cole?
In favor.
Commissioner Troy?
In favor.
Commissioner Seidel?
In favor. Next up, the commissioners are going into closed session for, I'm sorry. Help me with the words, Sal, because it's so late. We got to get an update on a couple of lawsuits.
Yeah, I mean, given the lateness of the hour, we can just do so in writing.
We're good. I'd like to continue on. Thank you. So I'll make a motion to go into closed session, but actually to go into closed session, I know. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Voting on that motion, Commissioner Cole?
In favor.
Commissioner Troy?
In favor.
Commissioner Seidel?
In favor. Before we go into closed, there will be no action taken when we come out of close. We will come out of close and move to adjourn. But before we go into close, we usually afford opportunity for the reporters to ask us questions before we go. So you don't have to stick around until afterwards in the parking lot and hang out and stalk Could you come up? Thank you. Yeah, please. It's just, it's late. We just want to hear you. I just want to be able to hear you.
Okay, so.
But Zoom can't.
Oh, understood.
And no one can project more than me, and I always use the mic.
Yeah, for sure. Listen, stage training. Sal, I guess my first question is for you. Some of the language in the ordinance about peace and good order also kind of legislates speech as well. I guess I'm just curious, do you feel like there's any risk of an ACLU lawsuit or any other thing for any part of this that would seek to limit? It codifies speech in here, and forgive me for flipping past the telecom agreement. Loud, boisterous, threatening, abusive, insulting, or indecent language.
I don't think that regulates speech in any way.
Language?
I think it regulates speech.
Can you tell me why it doesn't?
I don't think it does.
But can you tell me why it doesn't if you don't think it does? Because to me, it seems prima facie, it says that it is prohibiting certain kinds of language, which, which is expression and therefore First Amendment issue.
I don't, I don't think it does.
I hear that you say you don't think it does. I'm asking if you can qualify why you do not think it does.
I don't know what kind of answer you're looking for, Matt. I don't think it does. What, what do you want me to say?
I just want to understand why you don't think it does. You saying like you don't think it does, doesn't explain to me if, did you write the ordinance?
Could you tell me what you think is violative of the First Amendment?
I think it says, it's the, it's the subjectivity of describing what is engaging in speech or language or that is loud, boisterous, loud, abusive, indecent, insulting. Any of that stuff, you know, First Amendment speech is limited by time, place, and manner, but tip.
Are you allowed to yell "fire" in a crowded?
Time, place, and manner, but that's not a, but that's not a public outdoor space.
Well, to be fair, I'm going to just interrupt for a second. I'm going to actually read it into the record because you're stopping. From dusk to dawn, sleep or proactively lounge on the seats or benches or other public areas, or engage in loud, boisterous, threatening, abusive, insulting, or indecent language, or engage in any disorderly conduct or behavior tending to breach the public peace, including the obstruction of any public area or portion thereof with personal property at any time.
Right. So First Amendment has always been limited in time, place, and manner, but it is not usually a given that in the public space that you can be found to be, you know, subjectively loud, insulting, indecent. It doesn't say a decibel level. It doesn't say what counts as insulting to whom. It doesn't say what counts.
And I will say, you answered the question, you got an answer.
I did, but I don't think it's a satisfactory one, and I'll note that. The next thing.
We'll have to go. We'll have to just move on.
Okay. Sal, did you write the ordinance?
Did I, I helped to draft it, yes. I assisted.
Was it, okay, was it based on anything other than your own?
Please, give me the courtesy, Matt, of trying to answer the question. Okay. I am not the sole author of that. I participated in a draft with many others.
Can you tell me who they were?
If you want to ascribe those words to me, that's incorrect.
I'm just learning. We're all just learning tonight, right? So can you tell me who, if in addition to you, who wrote the ordinance?
Many others on this dais.
So you're saying you and the commissioners collaboratively drafted the ordinance?
Some, not all.
Okay. I'm not trying to pin you down on it, but I'm just trying to understand. So you and some of the commissioners drafted the ordinance. Did other attorneys participate in it? Okay, so you are the attorney who participated in this, and the rest of it was the commissioners, some of whom, but not all of whom. And I think I can take from your meaning and from Commissioner Cole's comments that she did not participate in this. Okay, so I'm just, I wanted to hear your opinion on that threshold. Thank you for that.
I think that's mischaracterized. You did participate in the conversation.
Yes, I did, but not in the editing the language. My position has been that we can solve this administratively, not through legislation. So I did not participate in editing the language, but I was part of the conversation, yes.
Okay, thank you. The next question I want to get is the idea that, you know, homelessness is an economic problem first, and that's from Michael Callahan at the DCA. So there is an understanding, at least implicit in the people who study this, work on this for the state of New Jersey, that, yeah, I think it did just cut, so I'm still understanding.
That this is an economic problem, and it will worsen as economic circumstances worsen. You heard from a lot of people who are experts working in the field on this, who are, you know, I counted dozens of comments from people who are concerned enough to speak on it. Do you think there's any economic regress that the borough can look for? And do you think there's any parallel between unwillingness and the fight so hard against affordable housing that happens in this town and the now fight against the behavior of unhoused people? Do you see any connection there?
I don't even know how to begin to answer that question, Matt, because you've answered it by asking the question. I won't answer that question.
I don't see this problematic that Haddonfield is having trouble with, you know, and uptick for folk and homeless people that experts say is attributable to economics. In the same town that's having this problem, that people said is it's an unsightly sort of thing we're using or troubling for their children, also don't want to build more housing that people with lesser means could live in, that would obviate the circumstances that's causing the problems they find so distressed.
I think the takeaway from tonight, if I may, is that affordable housing is a very complex problem, but I don't know if you can pinpoint one problem, say that's the root cause of the problem. So, I mean, there are some financial constraints associated with it. I would also say that we have more affordable housing right now than Haddonfield has ever has, as it made more of an effort to acquire it than, you know, any previous administration, at least the last four years. So, you know, we're meeting our obligations and, you know, in some cases, and then some. So I think there's a good faith effort to try to meet the requirements of affordable housing and do it a way where people can enjoy the borough and, you know, feel at home in the borough, as evidenced by the brand new building development right behind us.
It has a deficit of hundreds of thousands. That's not all Haddonfield's vulnerability, but we're talking about four to six people. The existing understanding around homelessness, going back to Dr. Jeff Rutter's work, United Healthcare, the city of Canada, the Canadian Public Health Care for Doctors, was if you can put someone in a unit of some kind with wraparound services for six months, that's generally the accepted way to get them off the streets. So if we have four to six people that we heard about, chief and everybody else, that are the issue, you don't have to build hundreds or dozens or whatever else to deal with the need of it. But if you found a way to build dedicated housing somewhere, it seems like you could, with the combination of social workers and all this other, instead of criminalizing some of these behaviors, which we don't know the legality, I've heard from other legal experts, that it is not legal with the plan to sort of it says. Do you feel like that would be a different approach? And you don't see any parallels between having problems with whole people's behavior and fighting so hard to not build a full house?
Well, you've editorialized the word is fighting, so you were painting us into the corner to answer a question you've already come to the conclusion of. No comment is the answer. Sure. Well, and it's verbal jousting. So I, well, it is a little bit because I will say that your premise, as you went from one point to the other, is that you keep using the word "you," that you have a responsibility. No, or the community, and then you have to define the community. See, this is how it gets complex really quickly. The "you" is the three of us. The community has to then be defined. Is it only a Haddonfield problem? I, we have just heard for three hours, it's not just a Haddonfield problem. So then, what's the next level up? The tri-community, the municipalities that all touch each other? No. Is it then at the county level? Is it at the state level? The same mandates for affordable housing that for years we have not fought. So I would categorically disagree with you that we fight affordable housing. Again, you will try to drag me into an argument. I gave you an answer. I do not think this community fights affordable housing. I do not think this community fights affordable housing. That is a present tense statement. Thank you.
People on your business was a realtor. And I guess the next question is, do you guys know how the folks made their way down from Hollingswood trespass ordinance to other towns of Haddon Township, intermediately banning sleeping in cars overnight in November, to you guys, the current existing body now putting forth some sort of legal action that you, that you've heard from people in numbers tonight, that is unpopular, potentially illegal, and you guys want to have it? Did you not, if you acknowledge that it's not just a Haddonfield problem, and Haddonfield only has so many resources bigger than that, do you notice the connection of how things kind of go all the way down and that this isn't necessarily going to change circumstances of the people that are causing you guys this public, you know, problem that you're experiencing heard from people out there?
Anybody want to tackle that? Yes, I can.
The way I see it, homelessness is a regional problem. It's a regional problem. And when one municipality creates a legislation like this, it forces people to move over to the next town or the next town or the next town. So we're never truly solving the problem. We're getting people off the streets and putting them into stable housing. What we're doing instead is just hiding it from our view because we don't want to see it. So I view this as, so I mentioned when I was speaking that I, I am in touch with Mike Callahan, by the way, at the state. I'm in touch with Rob, whose last name I will never be able to pronounce from the county, several nonprofits, I know, you know, they're all willing to help. And they were surprised that Haddonfield had never reached out for help because services are available, and these are services we pay into that we've never taken advantage of. And I can't wrap my mind around that, why we're subsidizing essentially services that Haddonfield would never have like bothered to pick up the phone and request help or into getting into program. And the inaction of previous administrations is now resulting in the fact that these services will be more expensive for us to now sign into. But that's the cost. That's the cost of inaction. I don't know if I'm very clearly answering your question, but yes, homelessness is a regional problem. It is not unique to Haddonfield. Thankfully, our number is in the single digits, six people. And in my conversation with the Council of Churches, Reverend Wayne, I'm sorry, I'm not in that denomination, so I don't know the correct way to address someone in that situation, but his first name was Wayne. way to address someone in that situation, but his first name was Wayne, and he and I had a very good conversation. And his point of view on this was that his building, his church, the Methodist Church, is used on Sundays. What he would like to see is it being used Monday through Friday. They have room, they have bathrooms, they want to provide shelter. And so I look at the opportunities we have in Haddonfield. We don't even have to go very far. We're talking about six people. So to provide stable housing, at least stable enough until they can get back on their feet or get connected to the right services to support them, we have that here. I just don't think we have the political will to make it happen, but the resources are absolutely available to us. And for some reason, I cannot understand, we have never, as a borough, reached out and asked for help on this from the programs that we, quite frankly, subsidize with our own taxes. I don't know.
And if you feel like maybe now that's our building or creating access to people the pressure is above for all of the reasons. I mean, it sounds like we take a load off agents, play it for a start. Now, David, when we talked, we mentioned that the visitor's end of staff, that stuff doesn't anymore.
Well, it doesn't anymore. We don't have a visitor's.
That could become a priority for this administration?
We'll take it under advisement. It's a great, it's an idea that was presented tonight to us.
I, yeah, please finish your thought.
No, we'll take it under advisement. It's one of the many competing priorities that we deal with all the time. Discuss, compromise, and come up with a plan to a problem.
And then the last question is, did you guys say you came into tonight wanting to hear from the public, wanting to hear feedback? You wanted to get the input. I think you heard over wrong what the input was. Did that affect your decisions in voting tonight? Did that affect how you proceed forward? You heard about the possible expiry of this introduced ordinance? If it falls under technicality? And you guys, while you have it, by majority vote? Did you hear anything tonight that you wanted to hear or any of the stuff you're looking to hear? When you said you wanted public feedback?
I go for, I mean, nothing here surprised me tonight. I mean, you hear both pros and cons. Or I guess probably for and against. But there's scores of emails in here that are for and against for the same reasons that were articulated tonight. So I think, as David said earlier, it's a good starting point. And I think we'll take some of the resources that were shared here tonight and some ideas that were shared and take a step forward on it. But, you know, inaction is not an option. And I think we have to have a bias for action to actually put these things in place and start moving it forward. So a prevent tonight is the starting point for all that, in my opinion.
I mean, I said it the same way. I'll just kind of say it a different way. There's an expression about plans are nothing, planning is everything. I heard a lot of plans, but not a lot of planning. And in the absence of planning, the absence of the community, the greater area coming together to solve a problem, we're duty bound to protect Haddonfield. And it is a last resort option, one that we don't even want to see. But we could talk about a problem to death, or we can act on a problem. And I'm encouraged that, I'm encouraged, but skeptical, to be honest, because it is a protracted problem that has not had easy solutions. I'm encouraged with the energy that I heard tonight. I'd love to see movement on the solutions to homelessness. But that doesn't take away our responsibility to the community to, in the absence of any action, that we still have protection.
Repeat your questions. I'm sorry. Oh, it's right. I was shocked, truly. I I posted on Facebook when the agenda went up earlier in the week. I honestly, I was camping with my kids, and I had like two bars of reception. I was like, let me just let people know this is happening so they can show up. Never in my wildest dreams that I think we were going to fill up every seat and have people in the standing room, let alone people from outside of Haddonfield, our neighboring municipalities, paying attention and coming in to share their opinion, because again, they recognize we are neighbors. So I was shocked at how the audience spoke up. And, you know, we heard from both sides, not at the same scale. That's important to note. And we keep using the word uptick. Six people, all right? We, please, as press, be very mindful about that word uptick, right? Like, we want to be really data-driven here. And so, yes, I was very surprised pleasantly. But again, I don't. The community has made themselves very clear. I don't think we have the political will to follow the community's desires. And that's really disappointing.
I'll just make one observation that you can report on. Our regular process of agenda posting is Friday by 12 o'clock. It's part of our communication plan we've been discussing. It's a practice that has been put in since I've been mayor. That commit, that the agenda with the item was posted Tuesday evening? Wednesday, affording anyone to then forward it along to bring greater visibility into it. But it happened because it is an important issue, and we decided to post it as early as possible to get as much visibility as possible so that we could get as many opinions as possible in the room. And for that, we succeeded.
But you didn't post the full language of the ordinance until after the project. Then after a lot of people.
He was right on that one.
When we spoke on Thursday, you said it wasn't what we have today.
The full language? Readability? It was posted with?
But that specific language of the ordinance about what the amendments.
Because we still have work to do to get the entire packet. This isn't the only issue in this packet. We, no, no. And so when you say about why wasn't the language? The, we're working on the agenda. This is one ordinance in the.
That you spoke specifically about.
We weren't finished.
But I asked you, when you said that would be released, and you told me it wouldn't be released, it wouldn't come out until tonight, then.
That is not what I said. I will disagree with you on that. We did not, I did not, I would never say it would come out on the day of. The promise of this administration has been 12 o'clock on Friday. It posted about an hour, a little over an hour late.
The draft agenda was posted. The language of the ordinance, when you and I spoke, and I asked you, what are the amendments? You told me that we're not going to be available until tonight.
No, I said they weren't going to be available until we post it on Friday. Well, we'll disagree on that, Matt. No, okay. There's nothing that changed. It published on Friday at 2 o'clock.
No, the specific language.
The specific language of the amended changes posted at 2 o'clock on Friday. I am disagreeing with you. I did not say that. And I wouldn't, because our promise is 12 o'clock on Friday. For all the words that we will discuss at a Monday meeting are available by then, and we were two hours late. I don't even remember you asking me when it would come.
Was the change.
Oh, you know, you can argue with me. I've given you an answer. All right. And that's fine. We can disagree. No, we could disagree. I can only say it came out at 2 o'clock on Friday. Thank you.
Is that good?
We want to hear it on Zoom. And you're not as boomy as he is, so.
How's this?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. My question is actually, thanks.
It's been a long meeting. It ran out.
Hello?
No, just talking to the other one.
Okay. My question is for Chief Cutler, if I may. So you had said that there was 148 calls in the last 237 days pertaining to homeless people. Okay. 103 of those calls, was that for homeless people or from four individuals calling?
All on four individuals.
So 103 calls about four individual unhoused people?
Arrested on various people.
Okay. Do police officers have to report and respond to every call they get? Okay. And do you have statistics on how many arrests were made after those calls?
Twenty-five arrests on those 100 calls.
Okay.
Twenty-five arrests on the 103 calls about the four people? So you arrested four people 25 times?
For trespassing, for drugs, for shoplifting. Last one was she shoplifted her heroin.
The what? I'm sorry.
She had heroin.
She had heroin on her? Okay, got it.
Those, they were, they weren't arrested just for.
Fun, Steve, I know.
Yeah, I was just curious as to the process with calls and everything. And I just wanted to clarify that for the record. Thank you. For the commissioners, what is, and this isn't about the homelessness issue at hand, what is the $84,000 local recreation improvement grant going to be used for?
That was a grant we received. Are these off?
I think they're all, yeah. We'll just talk.
Oh, that's incredible.
It was a grant we received for playground equipment to be put down at Radnor Field.
Okay. I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Sure. Yes, good to unmute.
Can I just call her by one thing? About the 25 arrests. They, they weren't necessary custodial arrests. When we issue somebody a ticket for her ordinance, it's actually considered an arrest, but it's not a non-custodial arrest. So I don't have the difference between custodial arrest and non-custodial arrest. But we issued 25 summons on those. Now, I can tell you the one with the shoplifting, her, and that was a custodial arrest.
What is a custodial arrest?
We actually arrest you and you agree.
Take custody.
There are some arrests. Problem, I would say, the most, except shoplifting, because you have to be fingered for it in the law of our state statute. But for trespassing or someone, or a ordinance arrest, we could just write you a summons or a ticket and let you on your way. That's considered an arrest.
Don't you have the statistics that are available to some people?
Not, not off the top of my head.
Seeing Abigail did not mute, I will move to go into closed session.
Second.
Reading on that motion, Commissioner Cole?
In favor.
Commissioner Troy?
In favor.
Commissioner Seidel?
In favor. Thank you, everyone. Again, a reminder, we will not take action. We will come out and adjourn.